Welcome to the board members for the meeting. We can start with the topic. We have four topics, place them on the agenda item. We will have a video presentation about attendance and availability. We have three people who signed up to speak about it. If you would rather wait until the end and listen to the presentation and decide if you may can speak about it, you can do that or you can do it because we will not enjoy it. Thank you for your time. Okay, all right, I guess we can. Vivian Mariotan?
Yes, I'm ready to be presented.
Okay, would you like to come down here and speak, address the board? You fill in this form. I do want to remind everybody that this is a meeting in the public, it's not a meeting, so we do not have a dialogue with you, we just listen to you. This is what I've got questions we have to ask. You have three minutes, your questions aboard. And I hope you can make better sense of it.
Okay, so good evening, I'm Vivian Mariotan, a parent of PSE in the Jordan County Elementary. So regarding the attendance area review for choice straight middle school presentations, I would like to emphasize that the community of this community is between what TSE has made up of trade, just between males and girls in the past couple. But TSE is not prepared for this proposal and further analysis and expert needs to be done. There is just no clarity on whether the main problem even exists. Conversation with PSE and my parents, there is no problem considering the work capacity of school, which is in contrary to what was reported in the one Troy license letter. In fact, TSE has used on three male parents and three assigned students from Old Park only to replace them with other elementary students. It's just another information I derive from previous scenarios I have to kind of go to understand what is he's really trying to do. Per standard proposal, problem statement is not clear, alternatives are non-existent. TSE has not done any surveys or considered possible options to the community and have not been able to share that with the families as of today. Only focusing on reassigning students in middle school without alternatives or analysis of advantages versus drawbacks of options is biased and expecting the community to bear the quantity of the unwanted ask for them is reckless. Based on those reasons, proposal is pending for review and should not be approved at current status. I expect the school board members to look into the following four factors. One, what is TSE trying to resolve? Two, why the assumed manner is an issue and why change is even necessary? How does this move more at one page than over other priorities? For example, competitive teacher contracts, evidence, heavily vaccinated directly, and school safety, does it help you dissolve the mentioned matters in a case? And three, with any proposal, what are the alternative solutions? For example, has student allocation for new and current multi-contract dwellings been analyzed to lower impact to students while regaling PSE to a school? Just having that data shared in the public is crucial before any proposal is set forth for consideration, also equal accountability is carried out by TSE, the Board of Education, and members of community, only means that it's too much. Thank you.
Hi, can I? Hi, I'm Amanda Haverly Harris and I am a Castello elementary parent. And I'm here tonight to be able to oppose any proposals that the zone Castello students in Marston do any other mixed benefit picture. The Castello community is not affected by any of the current splits occurring in this district, proposed rezoning unlikely leading us to a solution. One of the reasons why I denied approach to open the northwest corner of Long Lake and John Arden was because we knew no splits occurred and our children would attend schools all closest to our home, all under one line. It's evident that the process used by the district, forming and through the community, in developed rezoning proposals is lacking in transparency. Process lacked transparency. The lack of transparency arranges from the ultimate goals of the rezoning to what data and reliability and completeness of that data was used to develop these proposals. The censorship of other social media influence, what information the argument is clearly was denied proposed. To the fact that administration came to Castello in advance of the bond vote, showing us all the updates like plans for Marston, steps to commit and benefit my children, then attempt to earn a yes vote from the Castello community on the bond issue. Two, the process lacked appropriate community involvement. The process used to develop these proposals lacked meaningful taxidermy involvement other than those very few on the attendance of youth community, who met for a total of less than eight hours, less than one more event to resume the state's largest school system. Three, we simply don't have enough information, no process used after it was. There are plethora of unanswered questions surrounding the data used to assess the beginning of our school values, like the significant number of ongoing residential construction projects within the school district and the unknown impact that we have on the local people, the table defining the size of incoming permanent classes, and the number of schools' choice students that are currently attending Marston. To positive manifest all of the considerations, a process of this magnitude can involve, but put simply, the process is flawed and I urge you to not accept any proposed proposals. Thank you.
Board administrators and everyone in attendance tonight, my name is Senior People, I'm a parent at Castello in Marston, I'm a parent of Castle in Marston. I'm here to express my opposition to what is rumored to be presented tonight regarding the proposed middle school rezoning of the town of Castello. The community's goals were marketed to solve solutions that are questionable and not transparent. When the overcrowding, when was overcrowding or splits mentioned during prior school board meetings or during public bond discussions? And if it was an issue, why wasn't it addressed by the bond for the overcrowded schools? Has a problem been created by building the new Smith bigger than currently needed? Double splits have been in place for quite a long time, likely in place when people purchased their homes knowingly this was a possibility. And yet to solve them, it is proposed now to change schools across the district, including Castello, which has been a part of a specific path for decades. What other solutions will be attempted instead of rezoning this tremendous upheaval that we are about to embark on? As board members, I ask you to question if this is the right prioritization now rather than focusing on academics? Was this process truly the most thorough, inclusive, and representative of our world-class district? If this is implemented in 2026, are we confident that this process won't have to be redone shortly thereafter in response to the upcoming massive 750 housing units on the Kmart site? I am respectfully asking the board, as a representative of my family, to review the process that has been applied to this point and if appropriate, send it back for review with a new direction, considering impact on families, academics, and the upcoming housing expansions.
Good evening, board members, my name is Michelle Nelson, I'm a parent of the district, I'm also a former elementary school educator, and I'm here to speak to about literacy in our district. As you are likely aware, Public Acts 146 and 147 will recently pass, which is in compliance with Literacy Education Across Michigan. On October 18, 2024, the Michigan Department of Education's safety department issued a memo outlining key steps to prepare for compliance with these new regulations. Among the suggestions outlined in the memo were engaging in go-kart professional learning, aligned to science of reading principles such as Laxio letters training provided by grants funding, under section 35A of the State Student Aid Act, and attending MBE learners and informational sessions to receive technical assistance and guidance on best literature practices and the implementation of fiscal year 2025 literacy grants. Unfortunately, I must point out that the Troy School District has not fully leveraged available resources and grants that could support literacy improvement. One such example is, the district has not utilized previous early literacy grants such as the 35J early literacy grant, nor has taken advantage of the opportunity for teachers to attend Laxio Letters district. These opportunities are being utilized by peer districts such as Nobodies, which are moving towards compliance with Public Acts 146. By not engaging in these critical training opportunities and grants, the district is missing a short chance to improve both student literacy outcomes and future effectiveness. To date, I have not seen the district take action on new literacy bills or any teacher training initiatives related to this. I urge the board to seriously consider investing evidence-based literacy standards and training like those outlined in the memo. It is my hope that the Troy School District will use the upcoming 35M literacy grants and 35N literacy grants to benefit the students in our community. This is just one way that the Troy School District will leverage literacy funding and initiatives to benefit students. I would like a follow-up response to follow-up questions about the idea of email. What steps is the Troy School District taking to ensure full compliance with Public Acts 146 and 147? How will this be communicated to parents and educators? Why has the district not utilized critical opportunities like section 35J early literacy grants or Laxio letters training? And how does the board plan on ensuring that this doesn't have a guarantee of those opportunities that future will be offered?
Next day on our agenda is board norm setting.
So as you know, communicating with David Williams is not easy to deal with us, but it's back on the west side of the state due to the weather. So at the end, we had a chance to speak with David and we, in our conversation, decided we would go, that I would go forward, have a conversation with the board about where the current board, the previous board was with respect to those. And then have a conversation with, looking at those, looking at those norms and governance standards and determine whether they now knew, seated for, feels comfortable that those norms, those governance standards work for the board when you follow. So that would be the, that would be the role of our conversation this, this evening, really not to exceed more than, if we may, 30 minutes or so on, on this particular conversation. We don't, I don't believe we need to punctuate this conversation. If we do, great. If not, and board members, we're running out of time in order to have a huge group, bring back some, bring back you back, we can punctuate this in, in February. And pleased to say that I got to meet with Ms. Semler and the Potts had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Williams, right? So he was able to go through the same archetype inventory with them that he went through with, with board members. So everyone has had, has had, been at the same conversation. And I, in your packet are, is what we call archetypes at a glance, just to refresh newer memories with respect to the archetypes. Some of you may remember kind of where, where you were, based upon your conversation with David, probably second I have and, and obviously more, it's more fresh for you, given you just, the one reason they had those conversations. But in my conversation with, with David, he thought it would be a good idea when, when the time permits, board members have an opportunity to kind of share, if you're, if you're comfortable, sharing with one another kind of your, your archetype. And remembering that it's, it, the archetype really, where that comes into play in particular with this, with norm setting is recognizing that our archetypes are, are, can often times be a bias for us. And when we recognize our archetype, we recognize that of others, it, it's an opportunity to, to, to make sure we're seeing where the other person's coming from, if you will. And, and when, when we're sitting at the board table, when we're making decisions, yours anymore, board table, and you're making decisions and so forth. So that's the, that's the, the idea behind it. Now, I did take liberty to go ahead and print out the current board governance standards for the, so. This is what the previous board had identified. This goes back to 20, this goes back to 2020. And this was based upon work that the board had done together. And we identified governance standards for the board in whole and then individual standards for board members. And, and norms are referenced under, under their accountability, commitment to learning, inclusivity, stewardship, transparency, vision-driven, are all kind of woven into those, those various governance standards. So I think you must, if you look at those as a group, make sure, or see if there's a level of comfort with those current standards and, and norms. And if, if there's need for conversation on any one of your votes, have an opportunity to do that and then land on where the current board feels comfortable with you, based on standards for the board whole, individuals, and any particular norms that they, they can need to be added or adjusted, or if you like it the way they are, then that's fine.
One, one thing that just came to me right away, was from one of our, one of our meetings, the conversation that we had, that was to, it's more about non-messive call students, it's all about each student. Everybody talked about using all students as each student because it makes it mutualized to get at the student, instead of a whole, all to.
I'll go and take notes as you are, if you have any, try to capture all of it.
You know, I think you raise a good point in the last year and a half discussion, all the new projects, all kinds of stuff you want to do. So I would support achieving that. Speaking of, of course, the number one single is actually still. I feel like number one is human. If we read it, it sounds incomplete, but I think we need something like equality instruction based on best practice or equality instruction in some, stop this, please.
Do you guys have speakers?
Yeah, it's totally inaudible, we can't, you'll have to project.
I think we might, I'll remind you that this is a meeting of the board in public. This is the board's meeting.
You answer to us.
For the presentation, we will be using a microphone.
I'll be as loud as I can without going in everybody at this table. It just feels like it's, something else needs to be explained with it. So Stephanie, was your, I mean, I think you were kind of alluding to like based on typographical or based on evidence-based research, or something along that line?
Yes, yeah. Quality instruction based in research or based in best practice, or I'm going back up to the words at the top. Those, since I wasn't a part of this, of the words at the top, accountability, commitment to learning, inclusivity, stewardship, transparency, and vision-driven, those are like guiding values.
Okay, guiding values.
Guiding principles, okay.
I don't know, pardon me to say, I would, yeah, something I would add is broad. Right, so part of, I mean, vision-driven, I don't necessarily have quality instruction that's based whatever we're explaining, but they, so I tend to, so. Something I would do if we're not resurfaced or solved, you know, maybe.
So you would be able to experiment, you would be able to be, I'm going to be able to innovate, not be limited, don't want quality instruction to be limited by. Were you going to say based on things? I'm watching, maybe we have an opportunity to experiment, and learn, and people that work and, um, it's, to get this done.
Wait, you say evidence-based quality instruction or evidence-based instruction? You say evidence-based instruction? Is that what you want?
No, definitely interior innovation, right? And on the other side, want to make sure that what we're offering our students is what's going to make them work. And that might not be sexy, but, you know, more evidence.
Do you think that gets, that takes away the meaning of it?
I don't really, maybe this is what was going to be important. It's work hours.
I'll, I'll, and get a better sentence, or we don't have to make that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm taking notes on this, so if you want to just continue to go through those and then I'll take notes on all those, I'll summarize all those notes, get them back to you, and then, you know, we can circle back in February. You may, you'll have a chance to talk about them or to discuss those and I'll circle back, we can circle back in February? February, okay.
We can move on to the next one. Should we go to education goals and come now with a big slide? Or we, do we make a question? The Board of Education Council, which schools, community? The Board of Education's Hope for Superintendent, Council of the PLE in the upcoming, on the path to the school district. You know, that's really, that's, so.
District's chief.
So that completes the board of the whole, that is, for, for individual, people to understand. The individual school board member, who's in the individual side, and focuses on what we can do to help people. The individual school board member, who needs, in the importance of and actively engages in that long learning. The individual school board member, who respects both the quality and responsibilities, not She has something like as a loophole, it's pretty implied here, so.
Yeah, I'm going to, it's a board, okay, it works.
So basically, you don't act like individual, but I, as part of it. The individual school board member approaches. The individual school board members, approaches, who, who, if it's good, you could, um, you need, like, any questions, you know?
I think I, what, I'm trying to think about it, is there, uh, is there, is there like a guide, that these were developed, was it like a? Three or five? It was a good number, or, so, so we're not looking at ten?
Right, I think it was, to try to, and, 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 to be honest with you, um, again, a lot of this is sort of, is, um, you know, best practice, through, um, inclusion, you know, see, we go on, we're, it's, 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 you know, ten, it's, okay.
So we find something similar, through, I guess, with.
You could, or you can, we could go over to other districts, kind of, because of what others.
Right.
If you feel like, is there any similar?
Yes. So what I'll do, what I'll do is summarize, please make the adjustments to this, I got redlined, make adjustments, put that on the team folder, for you all to take a look at, and then, and then I would say if there's anything that you would like to add, add that to the team folder, as a possible, let, let possibly consider, put that in there, and then we'll circle back in February, and have that conversation, that hopefully you all can, or, okay.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to do, is also, if you want to share all the facts with each other, that they will make us know, because it's, now, to understand how we work with each other, and so, for, for the board.
I, I can actually, really, if you're willing, I'm sure, I'm really curious, um, would you do that, uh, how would you do that?
Um, there is, uh, shared folder in the board, uh, or, or, if you want to share together, or just, you know, just.
I have something.
Yeah, what do you want to do, actually, go back, what do you want to?
I, I would share, I'm.
In the shared folder. I already put it in the shared folder, I'm sure I remember this, I put it just this morning.
Come, I thought it would, that you share.
Yeah.
Maybe it's that, he, he was.
Um, but, that, we, we, just, yeah, a few minutes to, to, oh, it's, it's interesting whether you look at the overall group, um, and you see that, to, you know, and, and, and so maybe the final conversation about, about.
I was actually thinking of all of you, and you, because I'm curious, did you do this assessment as well? Because I feel like, oh, that's so, that, I don't know. Just to, because I was thinking. I, I can, no, I can set some, I'll set some time aside in February, because, well, few, I mean, there's, so I'll, we'll set some time aside in February.
No, but I, I love this, about, we added more in each of the archetypes, we added common things like Disney, or OSHA, or car dealer, that wasn't there before, we added, so it kind of connects you to that, to that. Oh, yeah, I love that. I love the other one, that's what they do to work, the board was piled up, and, you know, we have a week to do it.
All right, yeah, we're getting on.
Okay, the next gentleman on agenda, business services update.
Uh, I did, yes.
If the microphone is working, can you guys just use the microphone? Can we move it over? It's really hard to hear you.
Yeah, it just doesn't feel like a public meeting, or any thought of that, it's just trying to eavesdrop into the conversations, really not anyone participating here. Can't hear a single thing.
And I'm sitting pretty close.
I'm at the front row.
Yeah.
And all I heard was.
I don't know if anybody else in the back.
And, and I hope this doesn't happen in the future.
Oh, we apologize, this is not our usual place to have a meeting, this is a special place location, and.
You should have had the foresight and tested.
Yeah, it was handled three ahead, by weeks, right?
Thank you so much for moving the microphone.
Appreciate any effort, moving forward, thank you.
Anything, sir?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
So, the first item under our business service update this evening is the Troy High School kitchen line, food serving update. So, uh, Yale and TMP and the food service experts have been working on, um, a pretty sizable renovation over there. So, just for perspective, we did provide, uh, Yale, to get a, excess fund balance report for you, kind of get a understanding of where all of the excess food service fund balance is going to be going. Uh, this project in particular is, is the largest expenditure on that list, so, uh, feel free to kind of go through that list. Uh, this is a list that Yale has to submit to the state of Michigan every year, when you do have an excess fund balance, giving them a plan of how they're going to spend all this money. So, uh, specific to this project, an RFP was issued, so we did competitively get this out as required by the state of Michigan. Uh, and the scope of the work and all of that has been reviewed by TMP, designed by them. Um, and so you'll see there were the various categories, um, listed in your board packets, um, total project was 1.35 million dollars, so I'll let Yale, if you want to just elaborate a little bit on the, the remodel itself.
Sure, thank you very much. Yes, we're excited about this remodel, and it's, if you've been to Troy High, it's very congested, and so very outdated, and so in order to bring it up to speed, so the kids can get through the lines quickly, we had to create different, uh, serving stations. And so in, in doing so, we're trying to get up to speed with what is current, with what we can offer the students. And, uh, so there's going to be, you know, like a creation line, like you kind of experienced tonight, where the special meals are created, we're also going to put in a, like, a grow line, so that we can do, um, scratch cooking at that point, where the kids can either have a pa- pasta bar, or we can have a cooking walk, you know, where they're growing at the same time. They can pick the vegetables that they want to put into their, their vegetable bowl, and saute it, and put protein in it, and then give back to them, and it's, it's state of the art. So, we're very excited about it, and it did come in a little higher than we anticipated. However, the money is there, in our food service budget, to be able to, to cover the expense, so, um, are there any questions about it? Yes, sir?
Um, so, as part of, of, of the work, uh, you know, we did come in and taste the food ahead of time, do ChartBalls have any, um, any role in planning out the new work that will be done at Troy High?
We did have their opinion, we brought in, and they did meet with us, and met with their chef, so they understand what they would be working with, and so they agreed with everything they were doing.
Yeah, they, they were a part of the, um, with TMP as well, so the food service director and, I believe Chef Joey's there as well for wanting to, um, so they all kind of collaborated, they want the Troy kitchen, so the Troy High kitchen as well, together, just to watch the, the layout, so.
And then also, you, and then, um, for any equipment needs, or any, you know, you can, as well?
Yes. So, you'll see here the, the various trades that will be reported in the next meeting for formal approval, uh, going 1.35 million dollars. So this will spend down that excess fund, fund balance pretty good, um, we may have a, a, we anticipate, like, in February, we'll get the new amount for the last school year, that will have to formulate a plan for us.
And then what's the timing of the work?
Yeah, so the, the tentative plan is in the spring time, there's some work that can be done, kind of, behind the scenes, um, while the students are still in the building. And then I know that, um, Yale and ChartBalls were working with the high school administration over there to see if there's, certain areas, and seniors get out a little earlier, can they repurpose some areas and shuffle some traffic over into certain areas of the kitchen, that way they can perhaps get started, so, but at the same time, you know, we have to be mindful that there are still school sessions going on, so.
And then this work that's, that's going to be done, um, any renovations that will take place at Troy High, will not affect this, this work?
Correct. And then the anticipation is that it'll be done all in the summer, and then ready for the start of school years.
I would just like to add, though, too, that the equipment that's being purchased and everything, that is Troy Schools' equipment, whether or not there's a contract in service in our school operation, so the, the equipment belongs to Troy Schools.
I, I was just more asking of, are we collaborating with ChartBalls, and is there the one whose job is to deliver the food, and so, um, it would make sense to buy equipment that they could not really use to, you know, to do a, you know?
Right, right.
I was just curious, coming late to the party, um, so on the last page, it talks about future equipment needs, so it looks like this particular spend down is being sort of focused on Troy High, I think this looks like, or I'm, I'm assuming that there's been some sort of assessment of each of the surgeries, to sort of say, like, who needs what when, so that as more money comes?
Correct, and, and we're anticipating another spend down, possibly this, this coming year. Uh, and the, the reason for the spend down is because all meals are free right now, and so we're, and we have the reimbursement for those meals, and so it's creating a revenue source for us that is greater than normal, so, and the money has to be spent on the food service department, it can't be spent other places. We can spend it on equipment, we can spend on, on food, we can spend it on, uh, labor wages, you know, we can increase the, um, participation even more, so that's our goal. Yes, and we want to touch every building, Troy High was the one that needed the most right now, but as you can see in my, my little analysis there, we're trying to touch on every building, every elementary is getting new offices, every, you know, where there's need, some, like, our Costello and our Martell schools, they have a little bit more extensive server counter that needs to be replaced, I mean, that's a built-in counter, so it isn't just a reorder of new equipment and set it in place, it has to be reconstructed. So, I mean, that, that's going to be a little bit more of an expense on that particular building. But we want to bring everyone as much as possible up to speed and make life easier for them, so.
So there's like, somewhere there's a, a bigger scale for what everybody could potentially need, so, I, I spend down opportunities, so.
Right, right, no, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, in the, the bond fund, too, we do have, um, kind of for all the elementary schools, a larger construction number to work with. So as we start looking at that, we obviously have priorities beyond the kitchen, but that could certainly be part of the conversation, too, if we, you know, aside from purchasing just equipment, if there's a structural need, that's where the bond fund could help supplement some of those.
Um, first one of, um, when was the last, is this an add-on, the, the story, or is this a replacement, or is this?
It's a replacement, I mean, we can't really stretch walls, I can't knock down walls, and, because that wouldn't be covered, you know, they're very strict, and I put in there as well as what can be, how this money can be spent. So we can't physically make a larger kitchen, but we can work with what we have.
So this is a replacement, when was the last time you built a server tower?
Oh, God, when it was built in 1992.
So, they've had their life.
Yes, so it's been time to redo it.
No, when I initially saw this, I looked at it and went, why do we need air quality systems? And now, it makes sense, because you actually have a lot of cooking stations, and that's why, I mean, you're actually cooking right with the student, which is great, I think that may help increase the number of students, that's one thing that we're struggling with, is we want to, you know, students to eat the food that we make, we only have fifty-five, sixty percent at this point, so this may help us in the future?
Well, timing is, is our, um, our issue as well, you know, students only have a certain amount of time, and especially at Troy High, getting from the extreme end of the building to the cafeteria, standing in line, waiting for their food, and then getting with their friends, and they're so, they want to be social, so they only have like twenty-five minutes for lunch, and so the timing is a tight squeeze for us, so we're trying to facilitate as many spaces as we can to help expedite serving lunch.
So how does that help, that having live stations, when they only have a minute to tip the food?
Well, we're, we also creating, and this isn't part of this bond, or this proposal, but we're going to put something in the cafeteria as well, on another station, so it's like a marketplace, so that if they want, like, sandwiches, salads, and grabbing both types, there, we can create that situation.
And part of the air quality, too, uh, we did have an alternate that was accepted for replacing, uh, H218 here, that top of the kitchen, that is solely dedicated to cooling the fridge and freezer, so we have a walk-in fridge and a walk-in freezer, that houses a lot of food, uh, you know, that we've gotten calls on the weekends that that freezer wasn't working, something tripped on it, and, so that's part of this, active response, to ensure that those freezers and refrigerators are working as they should be.
Is that the food service equipment for it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, so that alternate one included under the quality air systems, that's the alternate to replace that rooftop, you had. So ordinarily, if, if that, you know, is dispersing cooled air to different parts beyond the kitchen, you could use food service funds for that, but because it's dedicated to just those freezers and refrigerators, we're allowed to put it in, but that's.
And you say we have left, we have, it's still left to?
That's our guess, and then right now, um, the state, so when we submit our, our audit back in November, the state then takes a couple months, they review that information, and then they generate a new excess fund balance typically in February, so, we'll be, we're, we're estimating, it might be a small amount.
She's planning to do that?
Oh, yes. And we have a year to do that, and, and we can't, if it isn't all expended by June 30th of 2025, then we can roll it over to the next year, with MDE's approval, so, the money will not go to waste.
Yep, so the next item here is the 2025 pavement replacement project. So this in line with, with, um, you know, typical year-to-year pavement replacements throughout the district, um, this project is going to impact Barnard, Leonard, Morse, Athens High School, and then the transportation site as well. Um, so the scope of the RFP was basically removing and replacing the existing pavement that was, um, through KDA, our, our site engineers, they determined that these buildings were the most, so, uh, we're looking at replacing the existing pavement in the parking lot, and the drive areas coming into the parking lot, and then they did go through, kind of in front of the building, and any select areas of concrete on the walkways that need needs, uh, needing replacement, those will be affected as well, so. Uh, and then Athens, it's, it's primarily that front parking lot right off of John R., um, we're adding, as we continue through the design phase. So, this RFP in, in particular, did result in, uh, two bitters, so. I'm sorry.
In T and M asphalt, maybe it's?
Yeah, one of the, like, acid drainings, just of that, uh, was essentially a, a sole bidder, because it's a proprietary system, um, that we use to help with the drainage and simple line areas.
And that was my question, is there something, we need to add, or, 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 something?
Yeah, it's kind of just to the north of the parking lot, that field gets really, really wet, so this company will come in and they, essentially, put these, um, I don't know how you describe it, but, it's a, you're basically creating little holes in the ground, but you're creating hundreds of them, and then that helps the water seep into the ground better. Um, it's, it's a, a really good solution, we've used it at another elementary school that we've, we've been successful with, and so it's just a significant cost savings, as opposed to digging it up and putting new drainage lines in, connecting it in with the sewers and all of that, so. And then T and M asphalt, we've had, we've had good, um, good luck with that in the past as well, so they're, they're a good pavement company, they're a good, they're familiar. So they're a pavement company that work with their familiar district, their timelines that connect. So, so in total, projects one, two, and three, which are Morse, Leonard, the transportation center, and then Athens High School. T N M asphalt did get those bids as the little bidder. And then project for Barnard Elementary, that is the Great Lakes landscape design as well. So the total package will be just over two million dollars. Questions?
The transportation center, what is the empty lot? Is that something new or is that something that already exists?
It's me. It's like a small section of that. Yeah, I think the last time, I understand the last time they did work, they did not do this section. So they're doing it now.
And then just to end this, I mean, they always do this with painting work done in Athens. So the painting work is, you've done it in front, so it's not going to get in the way or what can be redone again?
Correct, yes. This is an area that we have, that is not going to be touched by the renovation.
Is that also funded by the transportation center now that you're going to get two electric buses and that charging system and stuff like that?
Yeah.
That counts for that?
It's essentially prepped and ready for the electrical. There's a panel that's not used currently, that's where they identified that they were going to install since all the conduits around everything. And then the last item, the business services, is the twenty twenty-five flooring replacement project. So this one is funded, maybe I should say it is funded by the bond fund. And then this one, the flooring replacement, is funded through our safety fund. So every year, the operations department kind of goes through building by building and they make a list of priorities of which floors need to be replaced. So this RFP in particular was issued. So we're going to do some flooring updates as well as polishing work at Barnard Hill and Los Elementary Schools, here at Baker, the I D straight next door, and then the Athens Stadium concession stand building as well. So there's two parts to the bid. The first being the actual flooring replacement, and then we also have floor polishing as well. So you'll see that conventional carpet did win the bid as a little bidder for all of this work. And then diamond shine polishing was an only bidder, but we have used them in the past. It's just a market that is, there's not a lot of people that can do that type of work on a scale that we need to be done. So that one, there was only one bidder, but we have used them before. The price is on the line with what we have seen. So this project in total is eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that's the work we typically meet and write when the students are out and finished right before they come back to office.
All right, as the board goes, it's moved around here. I do apologize to the audience earlier about the sound. We'll make sure to stay prepared for the recording. But for the purposes of this presentation, which I think is why the majority of the audience is here, we make sure to, I think maybe the best way to handle this, I'll be doing the first part of the presentation, which is more of the background. Paul Wills from Plant Moran is going to share the information that was a result of the work of the attendance area review committee. I'll come back at the end and do kind of a recap. There is a period, I think there are some normal or natural breaks in the presentation that if we get to that point and there are questions, maybe the appropriate thing to do would be to bring the microphone over, ask questions, answer those questions, and then once you're satisfied those questions have been answered, we'll go ahead and move forward and do it that way. Does that sound, that way we chunk it out a little bit? Okay.
Is that easy to identify or are you going to let us know?
I'll let you, yeah. We're kind of at that most appropriate spot, okay? I think that's the best way. You don't have to remember anything from the beginning and so forth.
Hey, Rich?
Yes?
Can you also remind the audience, this is the first form of?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Nancy. Okay, so, by way of background, and important for the audience to note that this is the first that the board has seen this presentation. We have, this process is, was designed to, to create an opportunity for administration to get feedback from a group of individuals, we'll go more into that in the presentation, throughout the community, to take that information, to put that, synthesize that information, and then provide a presentation to the board. So this is the first time the board has had a chance to see this presentation. The intent this evening is for the board to ask questions, and then where appropriate, provide direction back to administration moving forward. So that's where we are at this point. So, that being said, why do we put, why did we put together an attendance area review committee? It's important to know that this process typically takes place not only here in Troy, but in school districts really across Michigan, every five to ten years. It's healthy for the organization on a regular basis to look at its attendance areas, demographics across the, across the organization or across the district, and monitor what those demographics are looking like and what do projections tell us into the future our enrollment in certain parts of the community may look like. So this is something that, again, is healthy for organizations to go through. Again, every five to ten years, you can see, we brought together an attendance area review committee back in twenty fifteen. We did it again in twenty eighteen, and we took a look at attendance, we took a look at demographics, enrollment trends in twenty, in, when we brought together our facilities review committee during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That was a much larger group as we were contemplating bringing forward a bond proposal to the community. The, that particular group took about six months and ultimately resulted in the bond proposal that the voters were gracious enough to pass in November of twenty-three. So. What we asked the attendance area committee to explore were a couple of things. We have what we call splits, enrollment splits. Splits are where students transition from one school to another. So for instance, they may, they may go from an elementary to a middle school, or from a middle school to a high school. So there are multiple situations within the community where students may split from their cohorts. So I may have, I may start kindergarten with a cohort of students, and part of my cohort may go to one school at a middle school level, for instance. And another, and another part of my friends may go to another school. That is, that's called a split. So we asked the committee to look at those splits. Ideally, we'd like to create a scenario where possible, where all cohorts of students travel together, where that's possible. That's not always possible, but we asked the committee to explore the possibility of that looking forward based on our current enrollment trends. We do have a scenario in the district where we have what's called a double split. And that is at Troy Union, where students split, where some students split twice. They split coming from middle school, and then they split again coming, going to high school. So there are two splits. There's one school again in the district where we have that double split, and that is Troy Union. So we asked the committee to look at that. You can see we have single splits at various schools, including Smith, Baker, Waddles, and Hamilton. So there are splits that occur across the district, and the committee was tasked with looking at those splits. The other thing that we wanted to continue to focus our attention on is making sure that we are creating scenarios where we have world-class programming for all students. That is an expectation in this school district, will continue to be, and we want to make sure that that continues. We looked at the current ratios at our, at our middle schools, both currently, and then projected ratios at the middle school. So the committee had access to current enrollment as well as projected enrollment. And we'll go into what those enrollments look like. But currently, our enrollment, or looking at enrollment ranges potentially based upon projections that could range anywhere from five hundred and ninety at one middle school upwards of eight hundred and seventy at another middle school. So the goal to even where possible, those enrollments between middle schools. Also, why? Other factors that we considered were enrollment, were the projections themselves, specifically birth rates in Oakland County. It's no, it should be no surprise that the birth rates across Michigan, well, across the United States, Michigan, and here in Oakland County, the birth rates as a whole have gone down, which is what has impacted our kindergarten enrollments across the district. Again, that is not a Troy phenomenon, that is not an Oakland County phenomenon, that is a Michigan and a, and a U.S. phenomenon that we're dealing with. Fewer birth rates, fewer kindergartners means fewer students coming through your school district. So how do we address that moving forward? The other piece we had to take a look at were schools of choice. Back in two thousand and five, the school district had a, began, the Board of Education enacted a schools of choice program. And that schools of choice program went through about two, about two thousand and eighteen, where in two thousand and eighteen, the Board of Education decided to, to kind of walk back from the more, the larger schools of choice program that was in play at the time, and chose to do a sibling-only schools of choice program. Meaning that for schools of choice students in our school district, if you had a sibling coming in at kindergarten, that individual was able to come into the district because there was a sibling already in the district. But we were not open per se for larger schools of choice numbers. So as a result of that, what we have seen, excuse me, over the course of the last several years, is our schools of choice students that are aging out, if you will, of the school district. So where we may have had, for instance, a thousand schools of choice students in our school district that were spread across grade levels, we are now seeing those students age out. So they're going through the system, they're aging out with fewer schools of choice students coming behind them. So that has also created a, I'll call it a challenge with respect to some attendance areas where some attendance areas, for instance, had more schools of choice students, and they no longer do. And so that is, that is an implication that we have to take, that we asked the committee to take a look at. Also, we know that we have a new Smith Middle School coming online, built for an optimal enrollment of about seven hundred and fifty students. And very proud of the fact that in the Troy School District, back to the excellence in our programming, we're very proud to say that we have four middle schools that are amongst the tops in the state of Michigan. All four ranked in the top six in the most recent Central Parent Rankings. So it's a point of pride for everyone sitting in here that we have exceptional middle schools, exceptional schools across our school district, and we're very proud of that. So with that said, you can see a bit of, a bit of background here with respect to our middle school building enrollments. We are, of course, committed to deepening belonging within our, within our school district. So belonging means making sure that every student is seen as a part of a community of learners. That's very important to us. And part of that is also establishing learning communities. We have done in our district a lot of work around what does it mean to build out a learning community? A learning community is where a student is part of a smaller group of individuals, a smaller group of students, that works together, that stays together, as part of their, in this case, middle school experience. So that's something that we're investigating currently. We're working towards building out. Why are learning communities important? So when we think about what an optimal, let's say, middle school might look like, and we think about learning communities, if you think about a learning community of about a hundred and twenty-five students, we pick a hundred and twenty-five students for a, for a specific reason. Our average class size in most middle school classrooms is about sorry, twenty-five students. Okay, here we go. Sorry. Twenty-five students. Sorry, okay, twenty-five students. A full-time teacher teaches five sections, okay? And then we have two learning, ideally, two learning communities in each grade level, about two hundred and fifty students. Now, that is not a hard and fast rule. It can be two hundred and fifty, it can be two hundred, it can be three hundred. We may adjust accordingly, but the thinking here is how do we build out learning communities for our students to, again, focus on that notion of belonging within our, within our schools? That looks, that creates, in a grade six through eight formulation, about seven hundred and fifty students. So ideally, about seven hundred and fifty students is what we'd like to see. It's, we can, we can make it work at six hundred and fifty, we can make it work at eight hundred. But this, we were asked, what does optimal look like? This is from our perspective what an optimal looks like. Learning communities, as I said, can flex to be larger, they can flex to be smaller when necessary. And those are the things that we're talking about currently in our planning. Additional benefits to optional enrollment, and this is what kind of leads us to what some of the challenges might be when we think about smaller schools versus larger schools in terms of enrollment, is elective, staffing for elective courses. The more stable the enrollment in a building, the, it provides us the opportunity to have more full-time staff. More full-time staff means there's a connection to that, to that school community. That's important. We have grade-level enrollment. When we have three more equally, if you will, sized grade levels, it allows us to distribute those students across the building more easily. So for instance, you could have three more equally balanced lunch, lunch hours. And those of you that have been at any middle school lunch will know that it's quite, it's quite the time if you've had a chance to be in the lunchroom with middle schoolers. So balancing that, balancing those lunches is important. So having a balanced school enrollment allows you to do those things. It also allows you to, that mass bullet point building, more comfortably enroll with facilities, and allows you to utilize your facilities in an appropriate way. Allows you to use the spaces within your, within your school as optimally as possible. So we were asked a question, or the board member asked a question, kind of what's the optimal size? Well, as we think about learning communities and optimal size, it would be about seven hundred and fifty. Recognizing though, again, we can make learning communities work larger with larger rooms, we can make them work with lesser enrollments. It's just, there are potential challenges that might result from each. So one of the challenges that we face, that we're facing currently, and why we asked the attendance area review committee to review our enrollments at the middle school is, we currently have Olin and Larson, which have over eight hundred students. We have Smith and Baker, which are sitting at just over six hundred students. So you have a disparity of about two hundred students between two of our middle schools. And when we talk about creating an optimal environment, there are some challenges that can occur when we have, when we have, when enrollment is that disparate, if you will. So one is, there are more partial staff. So in a smaller enrolled building, you may have more partial staff. You may be sharing staff between buildings, which can create some challenges from a community building standpoint. You have a limited available, limited availability for courses potentially. So for instance, at one of our lesser enrolled middle schools right now, we have two sections of art. Whereas in another one, we might have five sections of art. Art is still, is still offered. Students still have an opportunity to take arts. But when you have two sections, if you're you have two sections, if your opportunities are more limited than when you have a scenario where there's five sections. And those are kind of the disparities when we think about enrollments that we're looking at the potential of working to address, working to balance, if you will. Uh, there are uh there can be increased costs due to lower class sizes uh or or loss of of efficiencies. Those are things that we have to keep in mind. Uh, again, we have staff that may be split. Uh, I mentioned staff can be split between buildings. Staff can also be split between departments. So we can ask staff, we may in in lower enrolled buildings, there are situations where we may have to ask staff to teach between departments where in other buildings that in in higher enrolled buildings, that's not the case. So, uh, and then fewer uh and then when when you have fewer students, you also have fewer students that participate in the extracurricular uh courses. So it could be you see a scenario where uh classes like jazz band or or theater uh which or or yearbook aren't offered in a in a aren't able to be offered in in a middle school that has uh that is lesser enrolled than maybe a middle school uh and another one of our middle schools. So we were asked, what are some specific challenges that may occur? And these are the challenges when we think about the disparity that are would that would exist between a middle school of, say, eight hundred versus a middle school of six hundred. So those are the things that we see why we've asked why we asked the attendance area committee to look at, is it possible to bring more balance in order in in other words, bring bring some balance to that to that disparity? Now, on the flip side of that, you can get into a situation where you have larger enrolled schools where you where you have challenges as well. So for instance, um, you may have uh it it you may have a building where we have more than one uh orchestra teaching. Uh, we have people, teachers that teach an overage, so a teacher might teach more than a full section uh in within a building. Uh, we don't think that that's necessarily appropriate either. We like to keep teachers teaching five sections so they have a prep period, but there are times potentially where someone may teach it and that maybe asked or or in some cases uh have to teach an additional section. Uh, they may teach on their prep periods and so forth, again, which you don't think is helping. It's not something it's something we would rather than not do. Physical space can be a challenge when you have uh when you have a larger enrolled building uh that we have to do that we have to work with. So uh, teaching classes in areas that are not intended for that particular class, for instance, uh, making use of space that should have available to you that may not be conducive to what it was intended for. Uh, that that can that can occur congestion, classroom hall with cafeteria, back to we want it is better we believe they have balanced cafeterias uh in terms of lunch hours and so forth, and you could sometimes have imbalance with respect to that uh in in larger enrolled buildings. And then lastly, in a larger enrolled building, you have more students, so you have more students competing for uh some uh potentially whether it be athletics, whether it be some clubs. So some students may be left out or unable to participate in some areas in larger enrolled buildings where when we have more balanced enrollments, it's provides opportunities for for all students uh to to participate. So we were the question that we were asked is what what is the challenge associated with uh with a a lower enrolled building or what what are you seeing as challenges currently between having two middle schools that have over eight hundred students and two middle schools that have about closer to six hundred students? And these would would be what I say are some of the challenges that that we face and why we would bring the attendance area community uh committee together and say, help us present some possible solutions to how we can balance the the enrollment at our middle schools while also addressing the splits that I talked about prior. With that, I'm gonna stop because Paul's gonna do the next section. So I'm gonna stop and ask if there's any questions based upon for the board, if there's any questions based upon in information that that shared thus far.
So, um, you know, one of the things clearly that there there is some impact on academics having too many or too few students. Um, the one question that I wanted to ask, and I I think this is what um some of the community members have been concerned about, um, just one question. The first part is in terms of curriculum, right? Um, we don't have, do we have or don't have different programming at the different schools? So math, science, uh, language arts, the curriculum that is being taught at each individual school, middle school is the same. And then, um, the other question, um, in terms of what level math, um, beyond algebra, honors algebra one that's offered in the middle schools, how is that determined and what effect does the size of the middle school have on that?
Okay, Mia, thank you for asking that. And and you're that people you all have a chance to hear that. The the question about curricula, we offer the same curricular program in all four of our middle schools. The same course offerings are available. There may be some differences with respect to uh elective offerings because oftentimes electives are driven by student both student interest and the number of students that sign up. So uh, we may have interest in one middle school in a certain elective historically. Where in another middle school, there isn't, there hasn't been much of an interest in effect. At another middle school, their interest is in a different area and they run a class that another one doesn't uh run. But it is also driven by the number of students who sign up. Uh, we do, we do at look for a minimum number of students to sign up for a class in order to run that class. So it is student driven and so forth. Uh, but from a from a uh curricular standpoint, we offer the same curriculum at all of our middle schools. Uh, now, the the second question with respect to how was it determined, math classes, for instance, what math classes run? Uh, we have students at all of our middle schools that take advantage of all levels of math, uh, and it's driven by the student interest and student performance uh in in math. It there have been years where for at at all of our middle schools, there have been years where we have uh offered advanced level math and held advanced level math classes within that building itself. There are also times where advanced level math, let me say, uh, honors algebra two, for instance, as an example, that is a that is a beyond eighth grade level in math class, where we have enough students to hold that class within the building, we will hold it within the building, it will be taught by a teacher within that building, where that doesn't exist. And oftentimes that doesn't exist when you have a when you have buildings that are lesser enrolled because they just don't have as many students. The difference between five hundred versus maybe six hundred and eight hundred, two hundred students has an impact on the number of uh on obviously on the number of students that are signing up for classes. So where where we aren't able to offer a class within the building itself, those students will go to the high school and will take that course with uh with in in a, let's say, a first hour setting within a high school or a second hour setting within the the high school, but they're offered to all students. Our commitment to the community is where we have a a cohort of students that is uh is has signed up for us a particular course, and in this case, let's say, honors level math courses or upper level math courses, we will do everything we can to offer that course on campus. The goal is always to offer the course on campus so students don't have to travel. There where we can do that, we do it. There are some times where unfortunately we cannot, uh, and the student then goes to the high school. Does that that answer?
For something like and you might, I know you might not have the information, but for something like a math class, approximately, you know, what number of students would would be desired or needed to form a section?
So try to keep that number about twenty. Um, what if it's six, if it's nineteen? Now, then, we want to err on the side of of less crowd for students where possible uh and make it more conducive obviously for for students and our families.
I have a question, but I'll come there. I don't want to make you bring that thing. I'll go ahead.
My question is, you mentioned about classes like art and others, sometimes we have two sections and sometimes we don't have enough for three sections and so on. So just from my understanding, um, how do you decide, um, the the kids enroll in these classes, how do you decide which kids get into these two sections and possibly which one? And then what happens if they don't, if there isn't enough room?
So when I when I say course courses, students sign up for courses, so it's driven by student interest. Uh, and if, let's say, we have fifty students sign up for art, let's say, we have fifty five students sign up for art, we do everything we can to get all fifty fives of those students into that into those two art sections. Uh, if uh if we're over the number allotted seats within that course, uh, we'll go by grade. So if it's an eighth grader, the eighth grader's gonna get preference, seventh grader and so forth. So because the seventh grader may be able to take it next semester or next year. So we'll we'll go by by grade level to begin with. Uh, and where possible, uh, and where students, for instance, may sign up for a different elective, and and we're over enrolled in another elective, the counselor may say to that student, well, then we have art open over here. If we can push enough students into creating another section of art, we'll do that uh in order to make sure that as many sections are running as possible. But so much of it is really is driven by student interest. Okay, looks like we've covered that. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to uh Mr. Wills. Uh, so Paul Wills from Plant Mary Impresa uh has uh provided the the demographics for the district over the course of the last several or decade now probably. Uh, and uh because Mr. Wills knows our demographics extremely well, uh, we asked him, I asked him engaged with him to facilitate this attendance area review committee for the school district. Uh, he does this in many other school districts, uh, but Paul's extremely knowledgeable in in this area, and I'm gonna ask him to go through the next several slides. There will again, will be a natural break. We'll be able to ask some questions.
Thank you. Superintendent Chesky, good evening, board members. Um, so again, one of the things, if you were on the board last year, uh, we actually, Superintendent Chesky said, provided enrollment projections for this early last ten years. So coming out of the housing crisis in two thousand nine and ten, uh, the board administration started to notice some challenges uh with enrollments, especially in plenty of kindergarten classes. So from a perspective of historical, going to two thousand, the year two thousand, that was the highest birth year in Oakland County of over sixteen thousand live births. This past year is just over twelve thousand two hundred. So there's four thousand less kids being born compounding across the the multiple districts within um Oakland County. The beauty is that we're here tonight is we're not recommending closure of a facility. So again, you look at the strong demographics, the strong academics, um, the district does have some challenges, again, with some inequity with enrollments. So really, the purpose of the boundary is how do you take a look at the next five years and with project going forward? First off, we're big for middle school. Again, we topped out in two thousand and eighteen with seven hundred and twenty-seven students. You see the impact COVID on the twenty twenty twenty-one, it bounces back to six thirty-five most recently. Um, and again, these are projections going forward. So at the end of the day, we think uh Bakerville School really level off about five seventy-two here in the next five years. Switching gears to Bullen Middle School, uh, again, taking a look at twenty nineteen, topped out at eight eighty-seven. Again, you see the impact of COVID kind of working its way through the system. Um, in the last fall counts, about eight twenty-five, and again, kind of leveling off around seven eighty-five going forward. Uh, Larson Middle School, obviously a much more dramatic impact to COVID. Again, in twenty eighteen, topped out at eight oh two, it went down to seven twenty-two, came back to uh eight sixteen, at eight fifty-seven. But again, if you take a look at the cohorts of those elementary schools, as Superintendent Chesky said, you've got some uh schools of choice and other demographics that are have that school, I'm really to go down about seven ninety-five from that perspective. And the last thing, uh, we have Smith. So again, uh, you can kind of see the top off in twenty eighteen nineteen, which is under um seven hundred students with six hundred and eighty-seven. And the impact of COVID, just over six hundred, bounces back to six forty-two. Again, some of the same challenges you saw with the elementary cohorts working its way through the system the next five years, about five fifty-five. So one of the things you're looking at is you have just under three thousand students currently, the five-year projector enrollment is just over twenty-five hundred, so about four hundred less students, but again, divided by the four schools. So you're not at a point as a district, you'd have to consider closing a middle school at this point. Um, but at the end of the day, that's really the purpose, how do you best create some inequity that Superintendent Chesky talked about and also take a look at the activities of the program going forward? So from a progress standpoint, um, as Superintendent Chesky said, we've been doing this for a lot of districts across the state of Michigan since uh within the last twenty-five years. We have some very large districts, such as Detroit Schools, Utica Schools, Rochester Schools, Wild Lake, Grand Rapids. Um, these are not specific to Troy. Um, as I was, I had another board meeting last night, um, the Niagara District and the Combe County. Their challenge, they've lost four thousand students. So a little different perspective from where where Troy's at. Again, go back to the strong programming and the strong uh community that Troy does have. Uh, we took a look, uh, working with the twenty twenty-four art group. Again, there's twenty-five members within that group themselves. Um, and fifteen administrators and ten community members really to come through the first phase. This is only phase one. Tonight is actually phase two, which is presentations that board in January, and as Superintendent Chesky mentioned, uh, roll out basically here through the late winter and the spring of community inputs and stakeholders feedback and so on forward. Um, so again, uh, there's three month process. We've actually had multiple cabinet meetings, again, taking a look at the feedback from art and then coming up with considerations that ultimately can present here this evening uh for the board administration. And really, um, really, this is the focus on the four middle schools. So again, we also took a look at the elementarys. We have one of those splits. I understand you have a split right now in high schools, Rochester Road. Um, we talked about can you move that back to literally like it was in the nineties where you maintained it in Rochester Road, um, going forward. Um, what you'll see tonight is just several considerations. There were some that were presented. Um, there were just two extreme uh in terms of movements, didn't necessarily match up any of the goals and objectives, ultimately taken off the table. But really, at the end of the day, we focus on programming and experience first and foremost. Um, the location of the community schools, uh, the enrollment size. Um, lastly, we also took a look at the duration of buses. So again, um, how do you make sure kids are out on a bus for work in the normal times of going forward? So as I mentioned, this is phase two, which is again, recommendations and considerations and options to the board of education. So tonight, as Superintendent Chesky mentioned, we're gonna go through the uh some of the considerations and options and look for some direction I've been looking to report to enter into phase three, which is that feedback piece. Uh, again, working with the community, the stakeholders, and then in the uh April May timeframe, come back to the board with a summary of those decisions to determine if any changes are necessary at that point going forward. So again, this is a first step of a longer term process. Um, you're financially distraught, so you're not in a position where you have to do something reactionary. I think the district being very proactive with this approach, I do commit the board and administration team for that perspective. So before we go into the options, are there any, um, oh, actually, we have some more information, I'm sorry. Uh, so one of the things we took a look at, um, really at all four elementary schools, what does that grade cohort look like for the next five years? Um, what types of birth rates are we looking at relative to each of those individual elementarys and ultimately feeding up to the middle schools? We took a look at the um residents, non-resident employee feeder patterns, again, looking at how to balance those with the various options. We took a look at the ethnicity, English learners, students with disabilities, so not just the Gen I and Gen II special, it has potentially impacts some more vulnerable students in different category of classes. We looked at performance, Superintendent Chesky said, we've got top three middle schools, which is a it's a great problem to have when you start looking at academic perspective. We took a look at cohorts. So we really went back uh to two thousand and ten, really looked at the last time we really did dive, updated today's demographics, again, provided those five-year projections. But more importantly, we looked at what happened with previous art information. Again, what type of community input was part of that process to incorporate within the phase three and the phase four going forward. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, these are some of our current clients. Um, I was, we could probably list about twenty-five other that we worked with the last several years. Uh, again, some were very proactive, similar to Troy, some were reactionary, which again does condense some of these timeframes and decision-making going forward. Um, but if you take a look at the state, so in two thousand, there's over two million K-12 students. Uh, this past year, there's one million, three hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand less students over a twenty-five year period. Uh, as I mentioned, um, Oakland County birth rates are down from sixteen thousand down to just under thirteen thousand. As I mentioned, Oakland County birth rates are down from sixteen thousand down to just under thirteen thousand. So again, I think there was last year, we presented the state map since 1920. 1957, the state had the largest birth rate ever of two hundred and eight thousand. In 2023, there's only ninety-nine thousand births in Michigan. So I think some of the challenges, not just K-12, but community colleges. So we're currently working with Oakland Community College and Combe Community College, because they're facing similar challenges of how do we really create that student experience with the funding that we have going forward. So again, the three goals, again, we're really trying to right-size the middle schools with equal student ratios. We didn't say equal numbers, but again, based on the capacities, utilization, try to level those off from a six hundred and nine hundred variation, somewhere in between. Taking a look at trying to resolve the double splits, and then also impact the high schools. First question I asked Superintendent Chesky, said, are we addressing any high school boundaries? She said, no. I said, okay, good, we'll take that and decide that. So we had some districts that have done that in the past, matured, for Farmington Schools and Bluefield Schools, et cetera. Very successful in the over five, ten-year period, but obviously is very passionate with those communities. And again, any changes to, to what we recognize that going forward. So we're going to stop and answer your questions on demographics.
Paul, before you probably open up the board, there was a community member that during public comment asked or made mention of referencing additional builds within the community. You talked about how when you look at our projections, how those future builds are built into your projections?
That's a great question. We often, we actually get that question a lot, as a matter of fact. We actually had a question last night, Chip LaValle, they have twenty-two hundred housing buildings being built. So how does that impact their enrollments? We're cognizant of the K-Bart developments, actually, we were one of the finalists for U of M, is known as rep, unfortunately not selected, but done a lot of work with the Frankels and Forbes over the years. I understand their mixed-use developments, been approvals in the P O D, it's going to take some time. So again, if you take a look at seven hundred and fifty units, even if you had one student per unit, that's seven hundred and fifty students spread across potentially K-12 populations. And so as I mentioned, just at the middle school alone, you're going to have roughly four or five hundred students drop. So that's why I say we're not here recommending closing buildings. If that was the case, you didn't have a lot of the housing development you see, you might have a different recommendation, considerations of options. So right now, it's really how do you balance those adjustments? Looking at capacity, not just at the middle school, but also at the elementary school, because ultimately, that's where we see a lot of the newer families moving into the Troy district is that entry-level home with mixed-use housing developments, and ultimately trying to get into that secondary home, which Troy is a very strong housing stock. So hopefully that answers your question on housing piece.
I think it's important to remember that, the developments that are in process are factored into current projections. So those are factored in to projections that you will see here. The developments that are future developments have yet to be determined, which is why it's so important to go through this process every five or so years as communities continue to evolve and so forth. So the short answer to that is, developments that are in process, or on the books, if you will, are factored in to our projections. Those that are not yet will be keeping an eye on those moving forward.
Yeah, so that was, my question was about the future developments. But I do have one that's maybe more to the first part, but I think is relevant as we look at each individual recommendation. So as things stand, the new Smith is going to come online in the fall of 2026. At which point, Bullen students will then go to Old Smith for how long?
About a year.
About a year, okay. And then after that point, then it's planned that Larson students will then go to the Old Smith for how long?
For a year.
Okay, so as part of all of this work to be done, students from Bullen will be at least in the Old Smith for a year, and then after that, students from Larson will be in the Old Smith for at least a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is correct.
You know, as I looked at the material in advance in the meeting, it seemed to me that another goal, or at least a consequence of the options that you go through with us, was minimizing the impact of any movements on students. So was that just an outcome, or was that a goal that was kind of put up front in this process?
So is that negotiated, I think?
Yeah, so you want to answer that?
So obviously, with any change boundary, the least impactful be the most preferred. So again, as you look at the various scenarios, we kind of highlight that community schools are impacted, if it's least impactful, most impactful. With any change boundary, you're always trying to do the least impactful, understanding that there will be some impact. So again, I think there's even option of no change. Again, if that's something that the board feels very strong about, it's like, hey, let's look at this in 26 or 2030. Again, there's some impacts to that, as I think Superintendent Chesky mentioned, where you have elementary or middle schools with less than five hundred and fifty kids, you may have an elementary school with just as many students. How does that impact some academics? But usually, the goals are kind of unspoken, is minimize as much as possible.
It's hard to read that.
Quick question, goal number two, set resolve double splits. I believe there is one double split, so goal two, in addition, was it trying to solve single splits as well? Okay, just want to clarify.
Thank you, Dr. Mountain. Yes, exactly. When we talked, we presented this as resolving the double split, but and in conversation was where possible, also address those single splits if it were, if it were doable. So thank you for that clarification.
On your slide about criteria and data, you mentioned demographic data. Can you talk more about why did you look at it, what for, your purpose of that?
As we talk about the demographic, we're looking at actually the number of houses. Out of those number of houses, how many have school-aged children? Of those school-aged children, how many choose public versus private schools? From that, how many of the public are actually Troy district versus the charge school or neighboring districts? We also take a look at the private school loss at one opportunity. As we look at it that way, and that does include homeschools, so we did see a percentage of increase of homeschools after COVID. So that's some of the information that I think that has changed really over the last ten years, is the percentage of students choosing Troy schools is relatively the same. The only issue is there's four thousand less students in Oakland County since really the height of 2010. And it's ultimately, one of the things we looked at is not just the students themselves, but what type of housing stock, are the new housing stocks coming online? What type of housing is that? So for instance, there's a lot of that developments of Long Lake, liberal area. We talked to those developers actually several years ago, after those board members were there, like how many students have come out of that development. So that's what I mean by demographics. The Art Committee actually went even further, they started looking at socioeconomic. And that was some of the things that we showed relative to test scores, special ed. As a district, we have four very strong performing academics from all four middle schools. Sometimes you get into these situations, you have a client, and you encounter there's a lot of discrepancy between one school and the other, and they're trying to balance that socioeconomic. Where here, it's somewhat balanced across the floor from an academic performance scale point, so.
The, so as these recommendations were made, you know, those underlying numbers were looked at. And this is the same process that the district, along with Plant Mary and Cressa, goes through every single year as we, you know, plan and project how many students we're going to have the following years, a couple of years out. So we are constantly looking at this similar type of data.
Yeah, typically, every February, March, Paul will take the February count. So we count students twice a year, count them in October, and then we count them in February, and that's a blended count. So after the February count is in, and Paul takes and gathers that information, and he presents to the board an updated enrollment, he presents updated enrollment based upon accurate numbers. The challenge that we have, Paul will, I'm sure, talk about this later, and we've dealt with this question with the A R C group, is the numbers change. And the numbers do change, they do fluctuate because they are projections. So every day, the enrollments look a little bit different, they will fluctuate by a couple of students. But we just recognize that whenever we're talking about projections, and we're looking into the future three to five years, there is no, there are no guarantees. That's why we started to review these annually in order to make sure that we have the most accurate information available to us. Good job.
I have a couple of questions. If you can go back a couple of steps, to the Larson one. While bringing it up, one thing I've noticed with the Larson one was there was an increase in the number of students until this year, yet the projections are a flat dip. What did you take into account to make, come up with our projections?
So again, one of the things we've done is, we don't just take a look at the middle school, but also what does the feeder pattern for those three elementarys that feed into that? And so one of the things we're seeing is you're graduating fifth and sixth grade classes with eighty-five, ninety, you have some as low as fifty, sixty, and coming back in the next three to four years. So we say the incoming kindergarten class is significantly lower than what we anticipated. That's why, as Superintendent Chesky says, that's why you look at it in the fall count as well as the spring count, and you're going to adjust those. So again, for each of these four, we looked at the three feeder elementary schools, looking at not just the K, but also what's that zero to five look like? I mean, zero year olds, one year olds, two, three K, and then it gets incorporated to that.
So that, that comes from the Wass Elementary and the Hill Elementary?
Correct.
Barnum, Costello's that come to, okay, and you look at their population. A follow-up to that.
One thing that, it's not a question, but more a comment. You have projections till 2028. We're talking about making a change in 2026. So we really have projection data for only about two years forward of that. I mean, is that sufficient data, I think?
I guess I understand it's hard to predict more.
So the good news is, we actually have the current elementary schools projected out for twelve years. But this, unfortunately, you don't know what your current K-five is, so that's why we're going to do the five years. We can start doing some trend modeling after that, I think Superintendent Chesky, these are trend models. The fact is, you have three thousand, you're going out at twenty-five hundred. It might be twenty-five fifteen, it might be twenty-four ninety-eight, but you're going down. Obviously, not as significantly as some of the neighboring districts. Again, that's why you're looking at more of an adjustment versus a closure going forward, so.
And the trend for all middle school areas, about the same, no difference as much?
Yeah, so actually, what we're really seeing is, again, I come at Troy, when you look at some of the losses of some neighboring districts, they have more significant losses at the middle school. What ends up happening is you have more people actually moving into the Troy district from elementary into middle school. The housing stock is, how do I put this gently, it's not cheap. So I look at these new homes, like, oh, if I can afford that. I think, you know, so again, you look at who's moving into the district, what's the age of the household owner? I think we said it was like forty-eight years of age is the average. So not a lot of zero or five year olds going out of that group, but there's a lot of middle schools. So that's why I see middle school kind of flatten off and slowly decline, because the problem you have is, when you're graduating classes of X and you're bringing in twenty percent less, there's no way you can overturn that many houses to stay up. So what's going to happen is, is elementary, oh, well, you're going to see in the next five years, ultimately, it's going to come through in the next ten to fifteen years. And as Superintendent Chesky says, district's done a great job every year. Do we have to change or couldn't wait here? So it'll be interesting when you look at the February count, which is coming up. It's pretty important, we can start taking a look at that. And again, maybe that gets incorporated into some of the recommendations that come into the timeframe after Phases Three and Four.
And the Larson piece here that we're seeing is most dramatically impacted by schools of choice. The majority of schools of choice students over time have been placed on the east side of the city. So thinking about Hill, for instance, Wass, those are two areas, two buildings that we put schools of choice students in in order to bolster their enrollment over time. And those students made their way to Larson. So what you're seeing here is an age now of that group as well, as some of the other challenges that Paul has identified. But that's, I think, the biggest factor here.
So I've been on the board long enough to share with you, you know, a little bit of the history around schools of choice. If we, as a board, had not grown on the schools of choice program, we would have closed Hill. We would absolutely have to close Hill. I know that over time, we had a schools of choice program, and there was some pushback from the community, and again, maybe we needed to dial it back. I really just want to alert the board that that may be a tool in our toolkit, because when you look at these projections, and what Paul is saying is, yeah, we're not at a situation right now where we have to look at closing a middle school, but if these numbers continue to decline, and I will tell you, I just wrote a very interesting article, it's not just the US birth rate, it's like the world, the world birth rate is down. Yeah, yeah, so I remember, reminded if they were screaming about overpopulation of the earth that we have to work with resources, so it's interesting. But I think as a board, you know, what we look at, you know, through this process to the end of the year will be one step, but this problem isn't going to go away. And so we're going to need to look at what are the tools in our toolkit? And this is where getting input from the community, is it more important to have four middle schools and bring onboard some schools of choice students? Or, you know, do we look at downsizing five years from now? Because we just don't have the students, so.
Don't we have enough for a small?
Yep, yep. So those are some of the, you know, I think really the serious issues that we need to be thinking about as we look at what we're going to do with the Hennepin media channel.
Thank you, thanks for that perspective. I think we're ready to move on?
So again, we talked about the goals. So keep those three goals in mind, as Superintendent Chesky said, there is the double split at Troy Union. So again, on the left-hand side, which you see are the elementary schools. The middle column is really the middle school that they ultimately go to. And then again, you can see with Troy, there's a split both at into middle school and also into the high school. With Rochester Road really being the east-west divider for Athens and for Troy. All the other splits you have is at Morris, also at Models, and then also at Hamilton. So again, those are some of the elementary, middle double splits that we're talking about with the various options. And from there, we're going to the considerations. So again, this is what we just talked about. So again, you have just under three thousand students, two thousand and forty. Again, that with the projections, looking at your current elementary cohorts, incorporating some of the growth we are seeing at the residential level. In the next three years, you'd be about twenty-five, just over twenty-five hundred students, or a loss of roughly four hundred students. So the existing boundary, you kind of see in the VEN numbers, those are the numbers that Superintendent Chesky said. So again, you've got some district buildings almost as high as nine hundred with Larson, and some as low as five ninety-nine with Smith and Yellows. So again, the disparage between six hundred middle school levels and nine hundred, you can talk a little bit about some of those progress challenges. In terms of doing nothing with maintaining these boundaries, again, based on those charts that you saw in the previous part of the presentation, those results of those kind of put in more of a format going forward. So as I mentioned, we took a look at the elementarys themselves. So we're looking at the 2027 projected enrollment for those current students who'd be in sixth, seventh, and eighth. These are the numbers kind of based by the school. So again, I'm not going to read the it through specifically, but again, you can see on the low end, we have one hundred and eighty-nine students at Martel, Hill's at one hundred and eighty-seven, you have some as high as two thirty-seven, two twenty-six, et cetera, so. I mean, from that perspective, you can kind of see the variance of projected enrollment going forward. So Option A, again, what you see here is the current, in the colors of the existing elementary boundaries and what school they ultimately go to. So in Option A, we have a portion of Morris and Models. Again, this is really the Rochester Road splits back at the high school levels. All of Hamilton would go to Smith, all of Morris would go to Bullen Park, all of Costello would go to Baker, all of Troy Union would go to Larson. So again, one of the things you're looking at is, you're kind of, everything's above that six hundred mark, nothing's over the seven hundred mark. So on the next slide, we kind of do the pros and cons of each of these scenarios. So again, one of the accomplishments is you do right-size the middle school, you resolve that double split at Troy Union. Geographically, the middle schools are now closer to those locations of those schools. It does resolve the splits from least to middle, and it does meet all three goals. Or the con is, you still have those splits from middle school to high school. This option does affect the highest number of schools and students. So I want to just stress that, like, geographically, oh, this makes sense, they're all like six fifty to six fifty. You're talking about nine schools impacting thousands of kids going forward. But again, you still have the two splits that we mentioned at the high school level, and really, you're taking a look at the four elementarys. So a lot of impact within Option A. Option B, again, Option B, again, sorry.
These numbers, are they 2027 projected numbers?
Correct.
Okay.
And it goes back to the twenty, just over twenty-five hundred students.
Paul, we reiterate that for the group, that this is, that these numbers represent the twenty-five hundred students anticipated in 2027.
Correct. Yeah, so the numbers you're seeing in red, great question, is taking these numbers and looking at that, that percent of growth that you do have from elementary to middle school, using the 2027 projection, twenty-five hundred, twenty-six students. And again, this next slide kind of shows the impact of those all rolling up into those individual middle schools with those considerations. So that's a great question. Thanks for that clarification. Option B, again, the Hamilton split, and that's current, so again, that's not a change at that perspective. Looking at the projected current enrollment, about two hundred and twenty-six students in there. Morris, you would have a split, really, with the Rochester Road, taking about two-thirds to Bowlin Park, about a third would go to Baker. Waddles would also split, all of Costello would go to Baker, all of Troy Union would go to Larson, and all of Waddles would also go to Smith. So some of the pros and cons here again, is you partially right-size the middle schools, you did resolve the double split at Troy Union, you also resolved the middle school to high school split. So again, some of the things we heard from the ARC is, was the importance of elementary versus the middle school splits going forward. The two distinct district feeders to Athens and High is remains. You do have some splits after elementary schools, but at the end of the day, the middle school all goes to the high school together. However, the cons are, again, this is a lot of disruption at the elementary level compared to the other options. And again, they're only partially right-sized, the middle schools, we're still gonna have some disparagement of enrollment going forward. And also, as mentioned, you do, still have those splits at the elementary level going forward.
When you say the number of schools affected, that includes middle and elementary?
Correct. Great question. So option C, if you were to look at, on the district's website, you look at the current elementary and middle school boundaries, this one's probably the closest to them, I'm gonna kind of walk you through that, if you will. So what this does is really takes a look, and this is a little bit different than what the ARC community looked at, because there's some opportunities for academics that the district has options specifically for some of the community housing, where those students would follow from elementary into the middle school to help balance those numbers out. So on the upper left-hand side, the Hamilton split still remains the same, so again, roughly two hundred and twenty-six students. The only change here is all Troy Union would go to Smith, so that cohort from elementary, one hundred percent of those students would go to Smith Middle School, and at the high school, one hundred percent of those students would then go back to Troy Athens collectively as a whole. Pretty much anything else in this option pretty much stays the same in terms of current enrollment, current boundaries, and current splits going forward. So again, it does right-size the middle schools, does resolve double splits, does meet the goals, and again, taking a look at trying to keep those cohorts together as much as possible. Unfortunately, the Hamilton splits is still gonna happen, just with the Rochester roads, and then obviously, you have the Waddles, Smith, and Baker splits with the same. But again, that's the current situation that the community and the district are familiar with. Option D, again, these are options, so we're looking for some feedback from the board as we go through this. Similarly, this does take Smith up to almost seven hundred students. Again, the major change here is Costello would end up going to Smith, and all of Troy Union would go to Larson, and again, the Hamilton split would remain the same going forward. Again, the pros with this, again, you're right-size the middle schools with really, Smith being the largest within the new school, and due to, resolve that double split at Troy. It does impact the fewest amount of schools, but again, Costello, one hundred percent of those students would get relocated. So from an impact standpoint, that's one of the one school, but it's all of those students going from that perspective. As mentioned, the middle school, high school splits, unless the district decides to relocate the high school split, that's gonna be something ongoing and continuing. Option E, again, the major change here is all of Hamilton would go to Smith, all of Troy Athens, I'm sorry, Troy Union would go to Larson, Costello would stay at Baker, or go to Baker going forward, and then again, you still take a look at that major shift of students from that split going forward. So again, the pros are, you're partially right-sized in middle schools, you did resolve the middle school to high school splits, you do have splits still happening after elementary, but they do stay valid for that elementary, middle school, and high school. And again, very similarly, you've got entire school districts potentially moving as this is going forward, and it does impact that movement going forward. So one of the things that was brought up is, what about the no change? Again, we did review this prior to the presentation of, again, what happens to the enrollment going from three thousand students to twenty-five hundred? Yeah, that's one through twenty-seven, twenty-eight. What does that picture look like, let's say, after we do the spring count? What happens next year? What happens in 2027, 2028? And then, this just takes those existing cohorts of your twelve elementarys, and again, I think if you were a part of the board last year, we did drill down and show you kind of the elementary kindergarten, it's significantly different from your outgoing high school graduate class right now. So again, this is something to keep on mind as the board going forward. Again, here, no students are affected, I heard some clapping, so there's probably some community support for that. The cons are, again, you're still gonna have an equity as a size of challenges of academics at the middle schools, and again, you stop some of those double splits, which are trying to lead going forward. So with that, I'm gonna stop, we're gonna talk about options A through B, and the do-nothing options, with that, I'll head back over to Mr. Tim McChesky.
Question?
A lot of information there, so let's answer your questions, we'll go back to each one.
Could you go back to option C? And I guess, for the benefit of not only the board, but for the community, can you talk a bit more about how decisions are made for students, again, that are living in apartment complexes or are not homeowners? How do we currently do that, and then how would that work in this option?
Sure. Mike, now, no. Thank you Nancy, yeah, yes, so, option C, as Paul indicated, is all of Troy Union going to Smith. The second part of that is, we call, we reference it as community housing, that's specifically, apartments, we're specifically talking about Somerset Apartments. Historically in the district, and this goes back decades, we have, the Somerset Apartments have been split upwards of, or go to upwards of seven elementary schools. So they go to Schroeder, Venus, we send some of those students to Waddles, Morris, Martel, and Leonard. And they're, it's determined, based upon enrollment, when, when families enroll, they live in Somerset, they're then, they're assigned an elementary, that's the elementary that they go to. Currently, all of the students at Somerset that are assigned to an elementary, then come at middle school, will go back to Bowlin Park. So all of the Somerset students go to Bowlin Park. In this option, what we would be considering would be, students for a, a Somerset student, for instance, that is assigned to Martel, would then follow their cohort, their Martel cohort, to Smith. Martel goes currently to Smith, those students would go then with their cohort to Smith, and then they will go back to Troy High, okay? So that, that's how that would work. Leonard would be a similar situation, if you go to Leonard, you go with your cohort from Leonard, instead of going to Bowlin, you would go to Smith, and then you would go over to Troy High. If you were at Baker for, excuse me, at, at Morris, you would follow your cohort to Baker, and then you would go back to Troy High. So that would be a way at which, that's factored into option C. Option C came out as part of additional information, the AARC asked us to consider how do we, how do we, how we create attendance areas for students that live in apartments, specifically Somerset, and so we looked into that further, and that became an outgrowth of this particular option.
How many students is that?
Currently, there's about three hundred and sixty students that are at Somerset that go to Bowlin, that are currently enrolled at Bowlin. So you can see some of those numbers, so I think one of, one of, the Tellus question might be, or will be, because I know she, she mentioned it earlier, why does Bowlin's number go down to six oh three? Well, that's because in this scenario, we're, we're diverting more stu, we're diverting students from Bowlin Park to, let's say, Smith or to Baker, that more of those students or less of those students can be diverted, depending upon the numbers, but in this, in this particular situation, students that are at Somerset that go to Venus or Schroeder will continue on to Bowlin, because that accepts they're within that geographical area from their, from their elementary. So they would be following their elementary cohort, in this case, to Bowlin.
Can I have a couple of follow-up questions?
Are they all going to Troy?
And they, and they all end up at Troy? Yes, actually, they all get back to one of our goals, not impacting the high school. So they would all end up back at Troy High, yeah? Nancy, is that good? Okay, great.
Just to follow up to that, how are they decided how they go to Schroeder or Waddles already right now?
So it, it's, when they enroll, when, when families enroll, it, it's dependent upon where we have openings, and we try to balance where possible, the, the elementary openings that we have across the district, and that is a, a mechanism, I'll call it a mechanism, that we, a lever, if you will, that we've used over, for, for decades now, in order to help balance enrollment across elementarys. We just haven't done it at the middle school.
Okay, so as a follow-up to that, so now kids get bused all the way from Somerset Apartments to, let's say, Martel, which is probably the farthest elementary school from Somerset of all the schools. How long does it take for these students, and then what would that look like now when they are bused all the way from Somerset to Smith Middle School?
Or about the same?
I'd say it's about the same, because it's in the backyard, and in fact, New Smith Middle School will actually be the next drive up from Martel. But, but your point is well-taken, Vitale, in terms of transportation, and as we, as we consider any of these options moving forward, transportation would have to be taken into a, would have to be taken into consideration. I, I would say, my commitment to, to, to the committee, to the board would be, and ultimately, to the committee, to the community, as we think about current transportation, let's say, a, a student is, that avails themselves of transportation, maybe on the bus as little as five minutes, maybe on the bus as much as twenty-five minutes, let's say. Now, I'm making that range up, but for, for the purpose of this particular question. The commitment would be, we would not, we would not accept a, a, we would not make a recommended change that would cause a scenario where a student would be on the bus any more than what we would currently accept as a reasonable amount of time, okay?
And that's what, around thirty minutes at this point? Just years?
Thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Thirty minutes. Meaning?
Since we're at option C, I assume that we can ask option C questions?
Yeah, sure. And then we'll shift to another one for once.
Okay, so as we're looking at, at option C, if I'm understanding this correctly, if we're going from what the status quo is, we don't change anything, but option C changes is two main things. One, the additional Troy Union students who now go to Smith, and then the students who are living in apartments, in community housing. And there are no other changes in terms of?
That's correct.
Okay, so those are the, those are the two?
Those are the only two changes represented in option C, correct?
Okay, and then, in terms of the number of, you know, clearly, part of the Troy Union students are not affected because they've been assigned to Smith, or, I went to Troy Union, then went to Smith. How many additional Smith students would be affected by this, approximately?
Troy Union students that would be going to Smith?
Yeah, instead of Larson.
Yeah, how many additional Troy Union students would be going to Smith instead of Larson? Sixty? Annual, annual, right.
So right now, if you don't do any change, it's five hundred and thirty-six, if you do the change, it would be six eighty-two, the difference is what changed.
Yeah.
So about hundred and fifty?
Over, over three years, yes, over three years.
Yeah, over three, entire middle school.
Yeah, over three years, right, right. Yes, I was thinking about one year.
So how many current Troy Union students go to Smith?
It's about thirty-ish.
One-third.
One-third of that number.
Okay.
And we have, further fair enough for those numbers, yeah, pardon. Right, yeah, we'll park that, and, and give additional answers to that. Yeah, honor.
I have a couple of option C questions as well.
Sure.
The first being, taking this option as, is what would the impact be to staffing for buses, because of the additional bus fronts and expenses of that? So that's my first question. And the other question is consideration of adaptation for option C, where the Troy Union kids all still go to Smith, but the students living in Somerset have the option to provide their own transportation to their feeder school, or keep the buses that go to Bowlin and allow them to go to Bowlin if they choose? So just, just throwing something just out there for the, for the partner.
Yeah, appreciate it, okay.
Will you answer that?
What, continue to, and there's this option, move from Troy Union to Smith, but then provide the option for students, Somerset students, to provide their own transportation to Bowlin versus being bused to the other, they, they're assigned, but then being assigned to middle school.
Other way around?
Absolutely, I'm sorry, the other way around. So the flip of that.
So if, if a Somerset apartment student wants to set, wants to go to Bowlin Park, they would have to provide their own transportation, is that what you're saying? No, what are you saying there?
That's correct.
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
Currently, all the students from Somerset Park are going back to Bowlin. So like, keeping that as an option with district-provided transportation, however, some students may say, I really like the idea of going from Martel to Smith, and making that an option if their parents can provide transportation, because I think when we start with that option and us having to provide transportation, we're talking small numbers of kids with empty buses, and, so I'm just saying that could be possible.
So are you trying to solve the fact that we have more in Smith here? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, so basically, if we go to Smith up a little, decrease Larson a little, impact probably nobody else, other than maybe, you could get a little less at Bowlin if a few kids wanted to, to take that option to provide their transportation and stay in their middle school feeder path. So you wouldn't have?
Why would, why would Somerset parents send their kid all the way to Smith if you provide transportation to Bowlin Park?
Because if they're going to Martel, they only know fifth graders from Martel, so to be taken away from everything they know is hard. So some kids or parents might want that action.
Oh, thank you for that clarification. And, and so you were taking notes on these?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about option C, before we go to the next?
I want to just, yeah.
Okay.
You know, I think one thing that would be helpful is to, you know, you talk about the schools impacted in these options, it might be helpful to get kids impacted.
We have to, many of us asked for that.
Yeah. Any other questions related to any of the other options?
Yeah, I could just start with A, and then let's just forward.
Any clarif, any clarification and questions to clarify? Option A.
This is really a question for the bulk of the options that involve, that would involve a major transition. So let's say that I'm a parent, you know, at Costello, and I have a student that's currently, you know, going to go to Larson and is now attending Larson, and then this change happens, are we considering grandfathering if they have other siblings? So that's the first question. And then the second question is, if we are considering grandfathering, what would be the impact with transportation staff, routes, expenses, et cetera?
Two-fold question, I, let me ask, let me answer the second question first, relative to, to transportation. So in any of these scenarios, if the board So in any of these scenarios that the board were, were desirous of administration moving forward and further, further investigating any of these options, we would get, we'd get a full rundown of what transportation would look like, if there, if there are additional costs associated with that or savings potentially even associated with that, number of students impacted, those things will report back, we would report that back to the board. With respect, Dr. Meltz, your first question, in the, in the past, when attendance area adjustments have been made across the district, the, the board, boards have allowed for what are called grandfathering, I think what you're, or, or legacy is, is kind of what you're explaining. So if, let's say, an elementary were moved to a different, to a different middle school, I have a sibling that's currently in, let's say Larson, and I'm ready to go to Larson so long as you have a sibling at, at that building. In the past, the district has allowed for families to continue through that pathway in order to complete. It's called grandfathering or, or legacy. That's pretty consistent with, with what most school districts do. It certainly, it would be, it would be an option that the board could consider, it would be one I would, I would make recommend, because it's always our goal to keep families, to keep families together. And I think specific to that question, Dr. Meltz, just, we'll go back to the other one, but let me just mention this. This was part of the, this was the last slide, but the legacy piece. Also, there, if, if there is, if we, if they, we know that a move is going to be made, we offer, we would also potentially opt, offer options to families to move on their own in advance to kind of get a jump start, if you will, based upon what they anticipate, what, what an anticipated move is going to look like. So that, that could be an option. So in other words, I have a, a fifth grader currently, and next, the following year, that's, that particular school is going to go to a different middle school. You can choose to go in advance to that middle school if, if that is a, if that's a desire for a family. Those are the questions that have been asked of us in the past. It's an option potentially. In sibling, our goal would be to keep sibling together where possible. And then a commitment, as we, we discussed around advanced programming, just go back to the academic offerings and so forth. So preempted that last Monday. So let's go back to, any, any questions on option A?
Can we just go back? Can you go back to the?
I want to clarify, this is the meeting of the board in public. You can watch and listen, but this is not for you to participate. Thank you.
We'll get back to the rest.
Can we go to the next slide if it's part of option A? Okay, so this one impacts nine different schools. Can you just talk about that a little?
Yeah, it's, it's probably one of the most impactful. It, it impacts, you can see, it impacts Morse, it impacts Olive, Castella, it impacts Troy Union, and then?
Smithville.
Yeah, and then it impacts those middle schools where those students go. So that's, that, that accounts for the nine. It's probably one of the, it's, it's one of the options that is probably the most impactful. And this was one that the, the community or the A R C looked at because it, it cleaned up, if you will, some of the splits and so forth. So in an effort to clean up some of the splits, keep cohorts together, the residual impact on that is it has significant ramifications on the number of schools, which obviously then would also impact a significant number of students. But this was, again, was an option that they had come up with relative to the goals that we set before then in terms of the splits. It does balance enrollment nicely, but again, the impact of that is it, it impacts multiple schools and obviously then also multiple families.
Can we, as a follow up, and I was brought up as a follow up after today, just, we have the number of schools that are impacted, but if we get the corresponding student number of students? I don't have either, I don't know.
Yeah, this, this one has a pretty significant impact.
Yeah, this one's a, I think we should dump it.
I mean, is there, would there be any interest in, from the board's perspective, to move even forward?
No, no.
All right, okay, thank you. That makes it easy for us. All right, option D, any questions? Clarification for D.
In effect, four elementary schools. But it also doesn't avoid size. So now Boland is significantly, you have similar number disparity is?
Right. So it doesn't answer that, it doesn't address that goal of balancing. It, it, it does address some of the splits. A double split. And it, notice it, it impacts a number, a number of eight schools in, totally are impacted. It does meet two of the goals, but it, again, impacts eight students or eight buildings between all of them. The residual of that is a significant number of students and families.
Keep going.
If there's any interest in moving forward, it would be, okay, that makes it easy. Okay, option C, which we spent some time talking about, and any clarification on, any additional questions on option C?
I, I do have a question about the students who are going to be transported. Okay. I guess I'll go. My question is more to keep even the students from these apartments together. Are you suggesting here to buss all these kids to Martel and then to Smith? Or are we thinking, continue to keep them in their own elementary schools?
As, as the, as this option is outlined, the, the idea would be to continue to balance elementary. But where, where, once we assign a, a student, a family to an elementary, they would then continue on with the cohort within that elementary. So if they're assigned to Leonard, continue on with Leonard to Smith. If you're assigned to Martel, continue on with your students from Martel to Smith. If you're at Bemis or Schroeder, continue on to, to Oakley Park. If you're at Morse, continue on to Baker with, with that particular cohort, and then ultimately over to Troy High.
So you are actually creating a double split then with these apartment students?
No, it, it's, it's a single split. You're splitting from, from middle school to high school.
No, but?
Yeah, you stay with your elementary cohort from K through eight, and then split to high school.
Okay, so you stay your feeder elementary school off that middle school?
Correct, yeah.
Would that be a transportation issue then?
Well, we currently, that would be something we would have to look at. So our commitment would be we would look at transportation and, and the impact of, of that. I just happen to have the transportation guy right here.
So right now, there's about 380 students that live in those apartments, and all of them are busing eligible to Boland right now. So when you look at a bus typically, it fit around 77 students, you're, you're sending five or six buses into that complex to bus them to Boland. So the thought behind this plan would be to establish a pickup point within that complex, but for each of the three middle schools that they would be headed to. So you might add an additional five minutes, as Dr. Petruski said, you know, that 30 minute mark is kind of the cap of where we want to be. So, you know, to go from Boland to Smith, the ride might vary by another five minutes.
That's a direct route.
Yeah, correct, so those are direct routes directly.
Close directly from there to the?
Yeah, because of the, the high density of the number of students that live in that complex, it's a direct route from the pickup point to Boland currently. So it'd be the same thing, but to Smith or to Baker.
Yep, so you don't anticipate needing additional buses?
No, you're just diverting them to either Smith or Baker at that point.
So your six buses when they go three, two, and one, or?
Correct. Yeah, and then that's something, you know, to make them the most efficient as we can, we could even request that those families register if they will be busing. I know some districts have gone that route, just to make sure that they can consolidate the routes down as much as possible. But I don't foresee that being an issue, it's just changing them to a different building. Thanks, Dan, Mr. E.
Thank you. Any further questions on option C? Dr. Meltz? Dr. Meltz, please.
I don't know if this is, this is handy to calculate, but do we have a number for if we were to just solve the double split? So it would just, all of Troy and going to Smith?
140 something.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can calculate that for you. We can calculate that.
My question is a, is a general one, and I, you know, I, I know the, the kids, there's been a number of kids from Troy Union who went to Smith and then back to Athens. Well, that group of students, if they all go to Smith and back to Athens, then, um, they're probably not the only ones, but what students are that impacted, right? So they've now built their middle school cohort, and yeah, there's not more of them than there used to be, but they're going back to, they're going to Athens. I don't know how to phrase the question most accurately, right? Before it was those like 30 students who were shipped to Smith, built those relationships and then went back to Athens, where most of the Athens kids were from, from two other, from two other, so, um, how many other students are similarly, will be similarly affected?
I know it's, it's a weird.
Yeah.
So you want the same number?
Well, to investigate that, and we can, we can investigate that and get that, and get that, that particular number.
Because I'm sure there was another, you know, there's probably a number of families who were, you know, hoping that their kids would now be, you know, would now be put to Larson and then feed into, to, to, to Athens.
The, the, the idea of the community or the, the A R C group was keeping the, the concern around the double split. The thinking was if an option, if we keep them all together, yes, it results in double split, there is still a split, but at least that cohort is, that larger cohort together. So that's, that's, we can, we can answer that question. Any other signs on option C?
More than just option C, general question about the students that are at Somerset. Do you see them, I can speak up, do you, do you see them continue through the district all the way through high school, or do you see them moving to houses at different places?
Well, and, and that's, the, the question was what do we see with respect to Somerset apartment, individuals that are in Somerset apartments, what do we see in terms of long term? And, and that's a, that's a, that's a family decision. But I, I think ideally what we see over time is families that are, that are at the apartments are looking for opportunities to establish themselves within a community. So they're waiting for an opportunity to move into a home within a community that, that they, that they like, that they want, that they think is appropriate for their family. So it's temporary. For some families, it's, it's, that, that temporary, temporary is a little bit longer, for some it's a little bit shorter. But ideally, I think what families are looking for is opportunities to move into the, when, when, when home becomes available to them, to move into a community, again, that is suitable to their family.
So my goal for asking that question, we are making this entire decision based on a set of transient group of students who potentially may not get us the numbers that we want if they move away.
Yeah, I think, and, and I, I think I understand the question, and, and this is an option that we can explore further, if the board wishes us to, or, or not. I, I think the idea, the idea here is that in, in this particular case, it's, it's more so from my perspective, it's about cohorts of students staying together. And so back to that whole notion of belonging, from the beginning, the why, we talked about belonging. It's very important in, in our, in our school district, building that sense of community. So this is an opportunity to have students stay together, K eight, if they happen to be in, in that situation for that long before then going on to the high school. So again, this is, this is an opportunity to build cohort and, which we think is of value.
Yeah, you're at Troy Union, not in the one. Yeah. So the Troy Union, there's a slide that shows what the 2027 projection is of middle schoolers that came from Troy Union. That was 205. So about 90 of that 205 is zoned for Smith. About 115 are zoned for Larson. Out of the 90 that are zoned for Smith, about 60 we do allow to drive themselves to Larson. So there's about 30, about those 90 that actually end up going to Smith. But then split back and go to Athens. So that, that's where we've gotten feedback from the Smith team of, you know, you've got these 30 students from Troy Union that end up going to Smith, but then they feel isolated when they're going back to Athens.
Thanks, Dan. If you haven't already told, if you haven't already noticed, Dan's our number guy, he's our CFO, so he crunches those numbers really quickly. We appreciate that, Dan, thank you. All right, any other questions on C? Yeah, Nancy?
Just really for Paul. So do you, you know, in your demographic projections, obviously you've looked at, to Vital's point, you've looked at, you know, numbers of students in the Somerset apartment complex.
It's very consistent, so people move out, people move back in. Like I said, choice of destination of district, like it's great, we've talked a lot of districts, like if you want to be in choice, so if you have 25 families move out, there's 25 families taking that spot. So it's been about the same over the last seven or eight years. Actually, remember the X-PAT, what, this was like 2012? It's a federal policy, like a lot of X-PATS love Troy, and that's why I saw a dip in that, that's there, a restriction, they're federal.
So are the board be interested in administration continuing to pursue option C?
I think so. I, I do want to know the, the number of students impacted. And also currently, those, those Troy Union families have the option, like to drive themselves to Larson. I would be assuming that that option should go away.
Correct.
So I would like that all that information built in. That's a legacy piece, but still.
Could, could potentially still be implied, correct?
Yeah.
And ultimately, in the next part of the process, I mean, we're not going to make any decisions until we get feedback from Troy Union.
Correct. Yeah, so Dr. Phil asked, as part of the next, the next part of the process, as Mr. Wills outlined, phase three would be getting feedback from potentially impacted communities. That would be the, the board directing administration to, to facilitate getting that feedback, bringing that back to the board, along with the questions that have been asked for clarification and so forth. We would bring all of those back to the board for additional consideration, if, before any decision would be made.
And I, and as we do that, please make sure that, you know, I know that in any next phase, there'll be meetings at, you know, all four, not necessarily at the four middle schools, but this year, how that impact will be. But please make sure that those students and families who would be most impacted, so the Troy Union families, for example, or the Somerset families, that it's barely clearly made to them that we are in this, you know, process, and that there could be potential significant impacts to Troy Union families. And so those Troy Union families understand as they get that email, that it might be an extra important one.
Okay. Excellent.
Rich, as the next step, we probably want to also get some analysis on what kind of effects does it have for our D L L population or special needs population if we make these changes in any of our middle schools if there's needs.
Okay, let's move on to option D. Option D, just to refresh, Hamilton remains the same. All of Troy Union in this case goes to Larson, would go to Larson, and all of Castella would go to Smith, so it's just kind of flipping.
Ex two elementary, two middle, correct?
But it's the entire.
Yeah, that's the entire.
But Castella probably go?
But Costello probably goes to Larson.
Uh, correct.
It's sloppy.
Right.
So you're solving it, in some, in some respect, you'd be solving it at one, the business group that never did that split now.
Again, as the A R C looked at these options, they looked at proximity where, as, as best they could. And I think our, what our audience is seeing is, uh, there are no easy solutions. Uh, and, um, that's why we really value the input of, of folks looking at these, these maps and so forth, helping us to think through this. There are no easy answers. If there were easy answers, we would have done them. Uh, this is why these, these, it gets a little bit tricky. And it's also why we, we have a process and we want to stay within the process in order to allow itself to play itself out, so that we've done all of the due diligence and making sure that we've gotten all of the, the input that we need in order to ultimately come up with the right.
And then, um, in terms of, can we, I, what is the, um, can we go back just to see what the numbers are at the four schools that are option C? Okay, so even here, Smith is a little bit harder for you though. Okay, so can we go back to option D? So, other than Troy, Troy Union now goes to Larson, Costello instead goes to Smith, and then we'll go back to, to Athens. Um, what happens with the Somerset apartment students?
In, in this particular scenario, there is no impact.
No change.
Yeah.
They all go to Boland Park.
So do we have any sense between option C and D? Um, both have four schools that are impacted. Do we have any, right? Do we have any sense of the number of students that would be impacted?
Yeah, we can get, we can get that. My, my sense is going to be pretty consistent. Well, Troy Union is a little bit bigger than Costello. Um, it's going to be in a little bit less.
The higher the option C, option C and D, Boland Park have a safe student number. Do that one check that?
Would there be an interest in moving forward on D?
Not for me. It's up to the rest of the board.
I'm saying, I'm saying I get interest moving forward. Check that for me. Okay, uh, D, that was D, the C.
It impacts so much. It impacts Smith and more.
Yeah, really, it really puts Smith significantly, it kind of flips the current scenario that we're in with, um, Boland Park and Smith. It actually just flips the challenge when we talk about the importance of balance, impacts models.
The only positive is it keeps this side of Rochester and that side of Rochester free. Other than that, there is nothing positive.
When the A R C, when the A R C looked at this, that's exactly what they saw. This was kind of a clean breakdown Rochester road. It kind of, it kept, it, it made it very clean, which high schools, uh, if, looking at that Rochester road split, maybe that's, that's what's appealing as a potential option. But obviously it impacts a significant number of buildings. Obviously then also a significant number of students. So is there an interest in moving forward with option E?
Not only impacts the number of buildings, the entire elementary schools are switching, which is not a big thing.
Okay. So then, um, based on the input I think we've received thus far, we, we took notes. Uh, we'll get answers to questions. What I'm hearing, what I'm saying is that we'd like us to move forward with building out, uh, answering those questions relative to option C and bring back the information, uh, a plan, identify a plan for input, uh, to get feedback, I should say, from impacted communities relative to option C. And then, uh, we will bring that back to, uh, we'll bring that back to the board. We'll identify a timeline, bring that back to the board. If you look at phase three, that provides us some time during, from February to April in, in order to do that. Uh, it says, uh, T S D will have, will hold four listening sessions. We built that out, not knowing whether any of the, if all four of the areas would be impacted. So that said, phase three, we'll, we'll hold informational listening sessions that with those impacted communities, focusing on those impacted communities that have been identified. And also we are committed to doing a survey. So, uh, Ms. Montanti, uh, and our team will be working on a, a survey to the community as a whole, uh, because we would like some additional feedback on, on, on priorities and so forth with respect to middle school and, and so forth. And then ultimately we'll look for the, uh, the board will look to make a decision, uh, in April and May. And I'll remind those that are in the audience, uh, if we're, look, the implementation of any accepted changes, uh, by the board would be implementation fall of twenty-six. So we've provided ourselves plenty of time, uh, to, uh, get feedback, do the work necessary, inform the community and so forth, uh, for fall of twenty-six.
Can we, can we just remind, remind the community that we're exploring option C, getting further information, but the board has not made a decision?
Absolutely. Um, Ms. Leach asked that, that administration, uh, do our best to remind the community that, again, this is a process. We're, we're not moving to phase three. We will get input on the recommendation there, on, on, on this particular scenario. Uh, decisions will only be made until, will only be made until after all of that information is gathered, again, shared with community, with the board. And that timeframe would be around that April, May timeframe. Okay, yeah, next.
You know, really for my fellow board members, um, you know, the, the future projections are concerning. This kind of, for me, is like deja vu back a number of years ago. Um, and I would like to suggest that as the community is surveyed, we get some feedback on what options or what the priorities for the communities are, um, so that we know what tools we have in our toolbox, um, when it comes to looking at, um, middle schools. Because in my mind, and I know they're blunt, I'd like to ask the community, what's more preferable, bringing on board the schools, bringing back the schools of choice program or closing middle school? Because that may be what this looks like, you know, in five years from now. So I think this is a great opportunity to deal with an immediate issue, but, you know, in the spirit of being open and transparent with the community, this isn't a beautiful picture. And I think they, um, you know, we need to find out what the priorities of the community are, uh, so we know when it comes time to make some of these difficult decisions, um, we know, you know, what the priorities are.
Do you agree? Okay. All right, do, we want to take a five minute break? And then we'll come back to the last piece, another? Okay, let's do that. All right, we're just taking about a five minute break and then we'll come back. So if you want to take off, you're free.
Oh, two and a half hours of sitting in that chair.
I know. I was sitting far.
Hours.
They, yeah, they kind of sort of, legally they were supposed to be called, it's final, but there will be no change. They're spread across seven elementary today, but then they go back to four today.
I think it was.
If they go, well, by the time, in this scenario, if they choose, if they choose a middle school, that probably, they're then locked into that, right? Larson and they, uh, so if they decide, uh, if you want to, um, Larson, if you go to Larson, you then go to Boston. So they're getting, really, the purpose of this about is the kids grew up together, they can see, uh, well, depends on how they, depends on how they, today, they do all of it. All Somerset, by the way, by way of them all going to Boston, the people who, whatever, first school that was, uh, is decided by the middle school that we put. Today, there's no optionality with the, with the seven elementary schools that go to Somerset apartment. They all are going to Boston. And Bowlin, obviously, that's the voting for a tie. This, it might potentially be to actually allow those students to go to Somerset. And Bowlin, I don't imagine my own, would, would, would decide that.
Thank you all for coming. Please come back. It's really nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Yes, yes. Yes, Steph and I.
I'm really sorry if I was rude. Thank you.
Well, no, I mean.
But it'll still be Larson. It'll be all stars and all the principals, yeah, it's just.
I almost think they have to have some, this is, this is more, um, uh, formal. We should be happy for, uh, really, I think they, they watch the fact that they're on them. And that's where I get, I have a, I have a, I have a, not last. I've been doing this for over eighteen months.
I didn't know.
You should be kidding.
And in the, uh, in the group as well. But yeah, we'll get, we'll get the presentation.
So I was already, so I kind of doubled, that doubled as well. I'm not exactly sure what just the school board, what just the school board, uh, probably.
Probably. And a conduit, well, and Carl would be, would be the conduit that gets some questions, get information.
But it's a good.
Yeah, it is, it is.
The next four committees, five committees, or the school committees, continue to improve that team? Matt, you were part of that? Did that work? Okay, do you want to continue to be?
Yeah.
I don't think.
Now, when we continue to improve this, this reply is that.
Yeah. Matt, you're welcome to point out if we have a meeting tomorrow? Next time talking about.
Two meetings tomorrow.
We're happy to have you, man.
All right, Matt, let's stay on that. Uh, wellness committee was, um, was Nicole, Nicole, the wellness committee will be up at the meeting again. So.
What is that?
Well, it hasn't really been till much of late, but, um, we, it, when we think about, uh, nutrition, when we think about, um, any, anything that changes, uh, in. What else is part of the health committee, do you remember?
Is it health?
Is our, the red pillar project?
Uh, wellness committee. Yeah.
Or, oh.
It's just a lot.
Like if we talk about the Z, um.
Yeah, and, and can make any changes to, um.
Like our health curriculum, it would be part of that.
Can you change it to?
Nutrition.
I think this is one that probably won't keep on going, especially if we're having a conversation around it, service and so forth.
Okay, uh, so who would be up again?
Nicole was up.
When does it begin today or?
It, it would be in the, it would be, it would be after school. For sure.
You know, my hesitation is I teach in the community.
Yeah.
And so I can't, uh.
You can put my name, it'll be obvious there, but, um.
I mean, I can do that too, it just depends on what time of meetings are.
Okay, yeah, we can do it.
Okay.
Diversity council, I am on it, anyone else wants to be on it, someone wants to take over? We didn't meet, uh, at all.
At all.
Dusty? Uh.
Well, do you see, do you see a scenario where the university committee would be, could be there, or something like that?
Um.
What we would want, uh, for the.
That's my thing about the red pillar committee, so our red pillar committee does, so they're equity and well, so they talk about things like, I see all the question on, and, so, yes. They say that twice a year.
Is that organization or is that?
No, 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 it's those that both do teacher leaders. Yeah.
So I guess I was on it, but I didn't, I didn't, we'll do it the week, so I can continue to that.
We're meeting tomorrow.
Anyone have an interest in?
I'd like, I'd like to know this about, so.
Um. I'm gonna have to add some additional information.
Okay.
Yes, I'm.
Do that before next, before making commitments, next, next day. Okay, uh, this technology committee, that committee will, um, certainly.
Just started. Yeah, and I, I am on it.
Okay. Diversity council.
What is, um, I think interesting now, what is, I know you did that for last year.
Yep, I just go to the, go to the president's council meeting this year, they only are meeting three times this year.
Okay.
Um, yeah, yesterday.
Okay. I, I, I would have a, I would.
Sure, you can, you can, you can, Matt, then I'll make you. I would have had to do. I don't know how you guys.
I was having a meeting when this was excited.
Now you do know your.
Policy committee, yes.
So we, we do want, we want to need another member possibly here to come on with that, Matt and Nancy. This committee will be probably every other month, um.
And what's a some.
Yeah.
Judy was on all of it, and it's really working on policy.
No, no, all right, all right. What are your alternatives?
And then actually after the policy committee, I told us the stuff, then the policy, obviously, how's it.
Yeah. Uh, evaluation committee? So the hands, uh, which committee got there?
That was Carl and Nicole.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I think they met or they're in the.
Um, remind me, is this when we were looking at the industry or not?
Well, I think it wa, it, it, um, it was. Facilitating the, 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 the meeting getting food back right in the summary.
Maybe that's the worst job.
Yeah, that's probably why Carl was on there, and then you got a backup, and, and my guess is Nicole, she was like president, so.
So we just said president of the.
And then you gave your, your, your name on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yep. And then sustainability committee?
Uh, we voted around that with Nancy, you and I, but I don't think we did anything. We actually met, when Rick was here a little bit, a couple of times.
This was a newer committee, uh, and it was a result of. Facility review and an interest in, in, uh, one of our, one community member, Chris.
We just said it in the last week, did we?
We did, uh, very interested in getting that going, and, and I'm, I'm personally, I'm not opposed to that at all. Uh, I think if there's good, good information coming from them, I mean, we, I, I would bet, same early committee, we did, we did talk about committing to electric buses when, when. It was appropriate, and we can afford it, and so forth, so, um, I suspect it will be up in moment again, if there's any interest.
I would.
I would too. Yes. You had brushes there. I already.
And you were, you were.
He already.
And it's.
Yeah.
Okay, so next is, uh, officers, do we not have to, I don't even mention about that.
So. I'm not opposed to having a discussion about that.
Yes.
But I don't think it's something that we can decide today, we don't have information. Um, I think there's significant word turnover, so it's not, um, what I don't think we made that decision today. Uh, yeah, so I think, uh, I, I think it's fair to have that discussion, I would just set it for a later, for some point in time this year.
No, not yet.
And then if we decide that something we want, we will start with the next, with the next year.
So just for the new members, um, information, any, um, we, we should, actually, our CFO has been, uh, treasurer in the now. Um, there was a discussion last year, this was, you know, for very few days, in that area, that the, a whole member was in the now, treasurer, which is, um, so we want to just see if that's the norm, that's okay, if we need to change that, and if we do, whether it's the whole tail, whether it's the treasurer do, um, we need to kind of, this kind of role, and to do, and we haven't done that, and we thought this is the time, because we're in the, then, then, you know, you have to come on board, we could, um, discuss, see if there's type review, and then we should do that, we saw.
I probably encourage maybe, until such times as you're having, you're ready to have that conversation, maybe as, when you're at OCSBA, um, in Washington, wherever it is that we're interacting with, or the Bush Mother District, maybe ask them, what is, what's your board treasurer do, what is, what are their responsibilities, and do a little bit of research on that, see, uh, and, and see, do they see, do you see if there's a value in it, or is it, is it mainly just a country in that their name is on the check, and it's clearly nothing more than name only, um, but if there, if there is reason, legitimate reason, then absolutely, we should, we should investigate that.
I'm gonna do that investigation in sort of this.
Project, cause I would. So we would, um, I think it would, what it would be, it would be an agenda item, I'm not sure of a month, um, where either a head, some of those information presented, or, um, you know, required, not required, how long the district, um, had one, not had one, and then, um, whether that meeting, who, on our questions, we get information, um, of whatever districts we hold, we have plenty of concerns, we have, or, you know, what are, what are these are, and that, so it's, um, um, it would probably, it would be information here, and then we're comfortable.
And if it plays a step to the topic, and we asked, um, because NASB, and I, I know, you know, it's not especially across the town, I know, it's, we don't know where it applies, but. It's not whole times, it's, it's pushing back any business, um, my record actually, when we did this, was, you know, first of all, there was a, 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 and when we did the research, uh, of, 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 you know, could find a, kind of, how the reasons for, for treasure, um, seemed like that's the main part of it. So, yeah, everybody, yeah, people took it to, it was it, so my, I think you can do, you know, by, after, potentially, something about, you know, call NASB, see what they have to say, and then, it may be that people that are in, um, committees that interface with others throughout time, or in the state, and just do some survey, uh, who has them, or what they do.
We've really not had a long time, there's dedication pledge, or high, like, nine to dedication pledge, no treasure on there, so it's not, I don't, I don't, we're talking a significant.
I don't think there's board to run that just for that.
Because legally, um, you know, especially our president and the secretaries have very particular, very physical operation, for all purposes, have very particular legal obligations, um, and so there are functions that you have to have.
I think maybe it's the signature, goes on the check, or maybe, maybe not being, times it breaks.
So I think what, uh, what would be, kind of looking at what we have as per, per so year, and it's clearly not a six-month discussion, it's a two-day, yeah, two-day.
Okay, so whatever time you need in order to gather the information, we can put, you put an agenda, and it definitely needs to be a long conversation, just what did you learn, and then, does it make sense?
Do you mind, really, um. Too, too early, because I think there are other things, like the technology discussion, maybe we're gonna have a positive discussion, maybe, not food service, area committee review, like all those things are gonna be.
April probably would be.
Okay.
I'll put it as a standard for April, and just so you know, uh, in your team's folder, there's been what I'm calling a working outline, that's what I'm updating, so, I'm, I'm having conversations, uh, that's what I'm updating, moving things around, depending upon timing, so when you go in there, look at that document, that will tell you when we're targeting conversations, so you can kind of see, and then, under other, if you say, I noticed in X month, we're set to discuss this, does it make more sense to discuss it now, and this is what I'm asking, this kind of thing, bring that forward, and then, or you can discuss whether you want to, it would be me moving it, if you want, if that document exists, I'll put it in under E.
Okay, so between now and April, like, so next week, or the after, is the next.
OCSBA, so that would be like.
We'd bring mine initially, we'd like, hey, a friend I met at the other dinner, tell me about her treasure, okay, so we could do our own, kind of, research in. Okay?
Okay, now the. The board officers.
And those as they exist, our president, vice president, secretary, and John.
So it becomes a two-month question. But Nancy, we need the president.
No, I haven't seen it in a while.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I guess my feeling is, I'm, I'm happy to do this, um, particularly with the, the, the support for, for the rest of the board, but I am really interested in, in, really, uh. So I'm, I'm happy to, uh.
I don't, I'm continuing, yes, in the key, if you guys are all okay with that one.
Secretary?
She's good at it.
Then, I think, how this proposal would work on Monday, um, excuse me, next Tuesday, um, we start the meeting with the, with the organizational meeting, your first act of business would be to elect a, someone to preside over the, the organizational meeting, so, if now Nancy would preside, then she would better run the organizational meeting.
Do you think we made it more sensitive?
Yes.
Also, she has.
She's done it, she's done it.
She definitely did it.
So just for the new board members, you know, it's a lot, it has to do, you know, the influence, you know, very procedural, that people, you know, communications, and clothes, and votes, you know, creature positions, and then we approve our legal counsel, and, uh, we approve Judy as hosting the meeting, so, so anyways, where the fish posted, you'll see, it's, um, it's really, it's, uh.
Yeah, we have to identify the law for more, we have also legal counsel, we have, uh.
The person who posts the meeting of this, so.
And then, um, it's a part of that, that, um, for, for this year, we will continue that our, our CMO.
And it, and that's right, in April, for instance, if you chose to make a switch, it was, it's just a matter of us doing a resolution.
You put, you were asking, like, you not coming to the. Be there, someday, someday, doesn't get changed, you mean, they're all.
Yeah.
No, no, no. Would be up to you all to decide, true. Okay. All right, Fred?
So that finishes all of this, and that takes us to other, other, any other, other?
What do you guys see for other items?
Any, I don't really love any, anything you want to.
So sometimes it's feedback, we get from our community members about anything, um, I tend to typically have one or two big things that I'm trying to follow, and then if I would be bad, or if you'd like, go to a meeting, and there's, um, you know, decisions.
Well, I, I'll give a little tour of, um, like, so going to the, um, the NASB train, so I'm a different person, and I have, um, right, um, registered for, um, five, in February.
Oh, uh, the major, the institute?
Yeah, yeah, um, and, and they're actually really well done, um, they've been very good, um, you know, as I'm looking at, like, for example, today's, for tonight's presentation, um, I did, uh, one of my, data, and how that is, is used, like, how four, I learned more, he uses data for this, and, and, you know, you see how important that is, and like, um, the policy, so there's all the different types of data that he was looking at, and so that was something I was thinking about, in terms of, you know, like, our board, like, having multiple streaming of data, in terms of, I could, like, do, and, and looking at, look some more frequently, and, uh, kind of talk about how this is helping, should be looking at on a regular basis, and kind of, kind of, to, like, the, the evaluation, and also the, 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 so, um, so that data can start, yeah, it's really important.
So you like the one, the one, say, you guys money?
No, I was kind of sitting around, I was taking my favorites up first.
Perfect.
So I can check.
You know, I, I really wanted to hear that, if, um, classes are, are, so, you know, when we first started them, they didn't have a lot of, throwing things in that, so it was more kind of the taught data, and it wasn't, they didn't have to, so, like, there's some more recent material, so I don't think they're, they're new, so that would be, too, and that's something that's, that's years old now.
Yeah, I did it all online, online, that's because I came on board, just through COVID, and, and they were scrambling, a number of presenters, didn't know how to have breakup rules, or didn't know how to do this, or it's those times, nobody does that, it's, it's, yeah.
Um, I wanted to ask, uh, my, my question again, when are we gonna have, um, feedback, um, this is what I had to start times, school start times, um, I know that we are working with an outside consultant to have a review, when are we planning on getting more information on that, because, believe it or not, we've been back to school for seven days, and had two parents already talked to me about wanting high school start times to be later, so, people do still break this up regularly.
Yeah, we have a big call on Thursday, so two days with them, so from there, it's set, if we can get something like a Thursday, it's set to be great, um, but I'll get a better idea, um, and through a communicated, which is, you can, hopefully, kind of, create a roadmap.
And then it didn't really get me trouble tonight, but whether or not we may change to hit or get or better, I assume will probably, you know, could potentially affect busing as well, although, the way that you described it, you know, we already have five buses moving out of Somerset, so, they're just going a little bit different, so it might not be a huge, uh, issue, okay, so, if not February, we'll have some feedback in March.
Yeah, we'll get a better idea Thursday, once we pick that off, we gotta give access to those, to those, and help with that, too.
Okay, and then, um, I, uh, the suggestion of, of Chris, I've been as smart as people in the world, and pretty quickly, it was, um, a good, but easy book to, to read, um, so not that necessarily, but I, uh, since I've been on board for the last two years, we've, we've always been reading a book, and I don't know, I feel like, for, for the last two years, a lot of the book suggestions came from Carl and Nicole, so, um, I think I'd like to make sure that we don't lose, you know, who's the book with, um, so I'm not necessarily suggesting, you know, this particular book, I think we still need to, um, finish up our discussion on the H generation, um, and we're gonna continue that in March.
Right. There's another, from the next.
Third, uh, this, this. Does it, we first part.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask this.
There's, there's one, uh.
I don't think it's.
But then it'll be part of, I, I think we, it's gonna be on our workshop agenda for March.
Technology?
Yeah.
I need it so much, yeah.
Uh, cause you know, I'm gonna bring some of that feedback back.
Yeah.
And then I think it would be really useful, when we have that discussion in March, uh, if we could get an update, how things are looking, um, at middle school, what the feedback is, cause I know that's where the little significant change, I think, happened, and then also, if any other additional changes had taken place, if there's been any other, um, administrative level discussions, like, where we are in terms of, of thinking, um, going forward into, into next year.
Okay.
So my finally question was, probably.
But it.
My question was whether we can, so, we should, you guys, it can be, you know, like, you know, the sense of this, you know, and as far as the book, right, cause the floor, I think, in the book, for ten years, um, so, any board member, um, can write a book, or, 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 um, illustration, or, or, I think, I think, you know, it's the sense of this book, which you keep, because, you know, we've done a variety of different topics, and I think, and we, we, this.
You can, the stuff, books that you're, that basically, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
This is, Julie, though, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can, I can, I can, I can, shelf in front.
Are you doing bar?
Yeah, I can show my shelf and tell you, it's, 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 it's been bred so far, but yeah, we can do a great.
Yeah, we, I think all of them copies. Yeah, I guess the, the only, um, one where, have you guys read the ancient generation two?
I have.
You have, okay. Do you have a copy of it? Okay, so maybe, do you have one? Okay, so Audra. Yeah, just because we'll, we'll have the discussion as a board too in, in, in March.
Did Carl recommend the book to you that I just received?
Oh, by general, right, and why general is trying to be special.
I, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm sure you know that, so I'm, um, you know, the, the fact that you think that, or, then.
It's a real thing.
Huh?
It's a real thing.
Yeah, I, to me, it's kind of like the smartest piece of the world. It's, it's not a terrible book. It's not gonna be.
Called range?
Range.
Mm, I love that stuff.
Lisa, any other other topics?
No.
Yeah, trying to save you on.
I'm just massively freezing, I'm so sorry.
And he's equally as bold in, uh, in our regular room, so always ready to jam.
Sweaters for it, but.
I echo the N A S P training stuff, like, fantastic. Um, I also started on stuff that I like, that's pretty structured and everything. Um, uh, if you haven't already listened to the N A S P podcast series.
I do listen.
It's also fabulous.
Yes, I listen every half time.
Yeah, and maybe if you just like subscribe and then look for it, years and months, it's free for a month. I don't remember. Um, and I'm doing what you're doing, just kind of trying to take it and, uh, drink it from my, whatever happens. All right. A thought, maybe you guys already have another plan of how you do this, and it's just my nerve organization itself, is how do you keep track of, like, all the things? Like, the, I, like, I overturn all of my emails, like, do you come to this? And I'm trying to integrate and tend when I can, but like, is there a, is there ever been like a board event that you could come to this calendar? Where like, it's like there, and you just accept or decline, is that, is that not something you subscribe to that? Or, cause then I'm, I just keep putting it on, on him, the culture show. We got mentioned, I, whatever. Every time I'm putting another something, it's a whole book. Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm either A, I'm missing, and B, could attend. And B, like, how does everyone else order? Should I know calendar or is it a floor?
Maybe make games of calendar, uh, that goes out. To communicate, I mean, towards the end. It's updated with events.
But it isn't, uh, but it isn't.
Doesn't, doesn't everybody have that?
It has like schools.
Cause she may miss some things too, or she never have.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna have the standing invitation or, or the Troy orchestra, it doesn't have, you know.
Gotcha, right. So, um, if she's aware that we are invited and she knows that we are going as well, I think that she could sign up.
Gotcha, okay.
So sometimes she could, yeah, the theater show, Troy High, um, Italian, Mahon, Coles, or something like that. But she didn't, um, got just had.
And I do notice, because I'm, it's, it's, people send a chart.
Yeah.
And I do notice that, um, you know, for stuff that, you know, you need to be aware of, obviously, we're, you know, of occasions. So I guess we should continue to encourage people to calendar and, like, you know, very helpful.
So where, where are you all?
Great traditions of, through, through.
Is that just that, or do you want to?
It's thirty first and first. Thirty first is passing, um, Troy High, and so, so.
Fourth is T C C.
Yes. So typically, originally, yeah. So typically, all of us will go to Athens and Troy High and then depending on scheduling, people go to the, to the other.
So, and so it's clearly that we're finding, uh, to, to, to the education, and so, yeah, we can, we can, we can finish this up.